Good evening. We're going to get the meeting started. Good evening. Good evening, we're going to get the meeting started. Sorry we're running late because we just came from a National Merit Scholar Celebration. Tonight is Monday, November 13th, and we do a quorum, so I'll call this meeting to order. Our first agenda item is approving agenda for tonight's meeting. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda for tonight's meeting?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
We will now vote to approve tonight's agenda. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? The agenda is approved. Dr. Stanley, will you please review tonight's agenda for us?
Absolutely. We have quite a full agenda tonight. First of all, we're going to have excellence in action, then we will hear from members of the public. Edina Givengo is here to provide us with an overview. We have several consent agenda items, an update on our country's Spanish dual language programming, a STEAM programming update, our data metrics plan update, K-12 science update. We have several policies that we are going to go through. And then we have, for action, we're going to canvass our most recent election. We have some information about certificates of election, and then we will make it to leadership and committee and superintendent updates.
Thank you very much, Dr. Stanley. We're going to move on to our excellence in action agenda item, and tonight we are featuring our very own Southview Middle School and their recognition as a school of distinction from the Association of Middle Level Education. They were one of how many schools, Dr. Stanley?
Eleven in the entire.
Eleven in the entire United States. And I would remiss if I didn't mention the only one in the state of Minnesota that was recognized. So I would like to welcome Southview Principal Tricia Pettis and your guest of honor, if you would.
Yes, I have Assistant Principal Dr. Tammy Jo Cook with us, and I feel like any Southview teachers should also, I'm sure there's some here tonight, I'd love if they were, they would, I hope they're feeling part of this as well. Yeah, they should be up there with us. So we are super honored to be here representing the Southview team. We're just two of many of the people that even before us. I would say this has been a recognition of the last five years of all of our efforts around creating belonging and agency itself. You want to let Tammy Jo talk a little bit more about the award? We go to the next slide.
So just to share a little bit about the process and how we got going here, AMLE, for those of you who don't know, stands for the Association of Middle Level Education, and it is the premier association for professional middle-level educators. It not only spreads across the country, but it also goes international. So this is the place to go if you want to know anything about middle level. So like Board Director Allenberg mentioned, we were one of 11 schools that were recognized, the only Minnesota middle school ever actually in the history of this award, so we are the first leading the way. Super exciting. And also to kind of just let you know how this works, there are 18 characteristics that are essential that AMLE put out in its book, This We Believe, which really is the foundation of all middle-level education. 18 essential attributes that talk about what makes a successful middle school. What they do is they come into you and your school, and they assess you on all of these 18 essential elements of middle-level education, and see which of these do you meet, which do you not meet, and of course, in order to become a school of distinction, you have to be outstanding in all areas. So we feel really fortunate to have had a situation where every person they talked to throughout our building, whether it was a custodian, or somebody who worked in the lunchroom, or our students, or our parents, or any one of the staff members, everyone aligned in our mission, our vision, which of course ties directly to everything Edina Public Schools stands for. It was very apparent, and they heard the same story from everyone, which they said is not something that they typically hear. So we were incredibly proud of our community, and just so proud to represent Edina. There is a link there, you'll notice if you click on that, I don't know who's running the PowerPoint, but we actually have our own webpage for AMLE that talks about our school, and talks about all of the hallmarks that we really put forth in our application and our process that were standouts. And so Tricia's going to talk a little bit more about those, but know that AMLE is going to tap on us to be able to help other schools achieve this mission around our state and then in our region probably as well, so.
So if we go back to the slideshow, we got to go out to National Harbor last week actually, and present, accept the award, and then also present, and some of the things that, if you go to the next slide, some of the things that we were, made us qualify for this distinction is our work around belonging through our advisory programming. We got to share, that's a picture from our presentation we led. Oh, thanks. Around our advisory, also, all of our work around developing student agency through our unit guides, our learning pathways, and our daily flex time. We, our work around standard-based grading through learning progressions, our student leadership structures, our culture and climate through distributed leadership, so our culture and climate with all of our staff and students, and our guiding coalition instructional coaching, powerful PLCs, and purposeful community. So we were able to present and learn from others at the conference as well, and our presentations were well received by others. And it was exciting to be there with all other middle schools. And one of the ways that we were able to fund bringing a team out to AMLE, if you go to the next slide, is we host Southview site visits, and so just last week, we had 80 educators come to our school, and part of that, we offer professional development, so they pay to come see us, and then we get to use that money towards the professional development of our teachers. And so that's super awesome to highlight the work locally and nationally at the conference as well. So again, we're just super proud to be here and sharing the great work of our, of our teachers and our learners, and everybody a part of the Southview community. Like Tammy Jo said, working on our vision statement of each and every, discovering their possibilities and thrive. So thank you so much. Thanks for letting us share our story.
Thank you so much. Do board members have any questions or comments?
I'm going to make a comment. Why don't you guys come up? It's just a comment of gratitude. It is so apparent, just seeing the word purposeful up there says it all. You guys are so purposeful and intentional in really living out the mission and vision, and I just want you to know that. I see it every day, and you have created just a magical place for students and for staff, and it just speaks volumes. So I'm so proud of you, and so happy and honored to see you guys get this award. So thank you.
Anything else?
I will echo what Janie said. Having had learners go through Southview, I just said tonight during our work session, when you have your curriculum night, and the parents at your school get to come through and hear from the teachers, and to see what their learners get to do every day, I can't walk out of those buildings without having parent after parent say, I can't believe my kid gets to be a student in this school. And I think for, especially for a middle school, which oftentimes we think is such, can be kind of a, you know, interesting time period of life.
We like to say magical. Magical.
A magical time of life. I have some middle schoolers at my house, and they are magical right now, that's true. To have kids so invested and excited to come to school, and to have parents say, I wouldn't want my kid to go anywhere else, I think it's a true testament to the leadership at your building, and to the teachers who are so invested in the students that go there. So thank you for your work on this.
Great.
Thanks for your support.
Okay, we're going to move on to hearings from members of the public. Pursuant to Board Policy 206, we ask that you try not to duplicate information that has been presented by someone before you. If you have a complaint about individual employees, board members, or students in the district, please direct any of these comments to the appropriate site administrator, the superintendent, or submit them in writing to the board. The board typically does not respond to or have discussion on any issues presented, but questions raised during presentations will receive follow-up as directed by the board. I'd like to remind all speakers that your presentations are limited to three minutes. We usually have a display that comes up. There we go. And the display will let you know when your three minutes are up, so please pay attention to our clock. That, there we go, it's not 30 minutes. We might be here a long time. Thank you. And our first member of the public to speak is Sarah Patzloff.
Good evening. I'm Sarah Patzloff. I'm a resident of Edina, a parent of two grads from Edina, and a former school board member, and actually, most recently, an election judge. And the reason I'm here is in regard to the most recent election. Congratulations to the three that will be joining you. There was some confusion around the cost of the election, and I know that I have a former colleague who came and spoke with you last month about his concern around the upwards of $150,000 cost for running off-cycle elections, and was informed that there wouldn't be any cost to the district. And so he did attend the city council meeting this past week, and it was confirmed also by the contract that the school district will pick up the cost of the election that just occurred. And I understand that it is a one-year contract. I know that we used to be under a contract that had originally, back in the 80s, when elections were much easier to run. With the new changes in elections, with it being a five-week election cycle, you have increased costs, which is why the city is now wanting to move away from having the off-year elections, and trying to get everything on the same cycle. Because when we do these odd-year elections, typically for the average city in Minnesota, it's either city council, or school board, or nothing. For our city, it's just school board elections that continue to be off-cycle. And so when we're the only ones running an election, as in the district, you pick up the tab for that election. And the reason the costs have gone up so much, as I said previously, is that the election period is so much longer, so you have to have somebody willing to take in ballots for five weeks at a time. And then you still have your full election day in all of the precincts in Edina. I think there's a lot of reasons not to continue off-cycle elections, anywhere from, you know, we're one, we're, less than 10% of school districts continue to do this, so it puts us in a minority. There's lower turnout, when there's only one thing on the ballot, this most recent election. Granted, it was uncontested school board race, but 16% of the vote total was for the Braemar increase in spending for the remodeling there, and only 10%, 10, 11% for the school board election. But the biggest thing to me, the one that I think everybody in this room, including teachers and staff, and our board, most importantly, is that it's $150,000. And granted, if you start running it two years from now, which you'll have to do, that is going to be immense time expense to the district, whether the city's running it or you're running it, and the city is the one who currently has the expertise to do that. $150,000 is a huge loss to the budget. And having been on the board and going through budget cuts, we always talked about making sure our budget cuts started with the lowest hanging fruit.
Patzloff, can you wrap up, please?
Okay, I'm sorry, and things that are furthest away from the classroom. And to me, this is furthest away from the classroom. Let's fund our teachers.
Can you wrap up, please?
And things that are more important than running an off-cycle election. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Ms. Windemere Coffey.
Hi, sorry, I had to write everything down. So my name is Windemere Coffey. Thank you for allowing me to speak tonight. I'm here tonight to speak to you both as an Edina teacher and a parent of an Edina student, and to urge you to come together with the union to settle on a contract that includes fair and competitive wages for Edina teachers. Eight years ago, I chose to join the Edina High School community as a teacher, having spent the last 15 years teaching at Fair School, a WEMAP magnet school. When my school closed, I had my choice of any WEMAP district to transfer to, but I chose Edina. I chose it because of its reputation for professionalism and dedication to students. I chose it because I knew I would get to work with and learn from some of the best teachers in the state, and I do, every single day. Seven years ago, I chose to open and enroll my child in Edina Public Schools. Again, I could have sent him anywhere, but I chose Edina. I chose it because I knew he would have the most dedicated and caring teachers possible. I chose it because of its reputation for excellence, and I would make that choice again in a heartbeat. From kindergarten to sixth grade, my child has had the most amazing teachers I could hope for. I am dedicated to Edina Public Schools, both as a parent and a teacher, but I'm beginning to question whether Edina Public Schools is dedicated to me. Since 2018, our insurance premiums have increased 23.1%, yet the district contributions have only increased 6%. Over the last six years, inflation has increased 25.74%, and yet Edina has only added 8.26% to our salary schedule. I essentially, like, make less money now than I did a few years ago. In no other profession do you make less, the more experienced you are. Edina Public Schools defines itself as a school of excellence. That excellence doesn't come from fancy buildings or new technology. That excellence comes from teachers and other staff who day in and day out devote themselves to their students. I've seen this firsthand, both as a teacher and as a parent. Excellence shouldn't be funded on the backs of devoted teachers, nor should it be bought at rock-bottom prices. If Edina truly values its teachers and the excellence they bring to this district, then it needs to prove it, not by sending emails with a thank you video, or an occasional shout-out in a newsletter, but by offering teachers what they desperately need, a contract that is fair and comparable with neighboring districts. Thank you.
Thank you. Roland Tallon. I, I'm not going to be able to get through all the speakers if people can't hear who's speaking next. Is Roland Tallon here?
Chair Allenberg, Dr. Stanley, members of the school board, thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak. My name is Roland Tallon. I have been a member of the Edina community for just over 20 years. First, as an intern, and then as a classroom teacher at Norman Elementary French Immersion. Can you hear the beautiful accent? And today, as a peer coach. In this position, I am fortunate to collaborate with over 80 teachers in six different buildings at the elementary, middle school, and high school level. I believe EPS should be proud of its teachers. I am able to witness firsthand the excellent job Edina teachers are doing in their learning spaces, and their professionalism during our coaching sessions. To keep this high level of performance, not only should EPS recruit the best teachers to join our ranks, but also ensure that current teachers do not leave for neighboring districts. How, you might ask? Well, rejoice, I came with answers. But before delivering them, let me instill just the right amount of suspense. As a peer coach, engaging in professional discussions is my everyday. I just had one about belonging, a topic I am sure you're familiar with. We want our students to experience a sense of belonging. To that end, we want them to not only feel tolerated, but valued. So here it is. Suspense is over. To attract the best teachers and keep your current talented workforce, make them feel valued. How? Well, don't tell new teachers, we value you, but we won't offer you the same benefits as current teachers. Keep the early retirement incentive intact in the contract. Don't tell special ed teachers, we value you, but we're taking away that during the day, build time for due process. Keep this in the contract. Don't tell preschool teachers, we value you and the teaching license you earned, but we won't pay you as much as other teachers. Make equal pay for equal work, a reality. Finally, do not tell teachers, we value you, but we will pay you less than neighboring districts. Pay your teachers as much as nearby districts do. Because, in the end, the better EPS teachers will be, the better the education our students will receive. Respectfully, and from the bottom of my heart, thank you for listening.
Jason Doctor. Jason Doctor. Jason, are you here?
I'm here. Good evening, Dr. Stanley, Chair Allenberg, other board members, teachers and community members present. I'm Jason Doctor, I'm the president of Education Minnesota, Edina. Brought a few of my friends today, they're kind of behind me, and they're very much interested in how the district will respond to our latest negotiations offered tomorrow, so hopefully they're engaged. I'd like to bring the two previous speakers back up, because they did a lot better job than you've heard from me, so hopefully this doesn't sound the same. At today's board work session, you received the 2023 residential survey. The data as it pertains to teachers was not surprising. The community as a whole, and parents in particular, are consistent in their responses. When asked, what do you like most about Edina Public Schools, the number-one response is good teachers. When asked to rate job performance, teachers receive the highest rating. I have worked, as we've heard from a couple members here, I've worked over 20 years in this community, and I'd be willing to bet many of the teachers behind me have also dedicated their careers to this community. The community knows us, and they trust us, because Edina has been able to hire and retain the best and the brightest for the duration of their careers. Unfortunately, over the last six years, the board and the administration have created a situation where Edina is becoming a revolving door. One where teachers come to gain experience, but then leave for higher salaries, better benefits, and better working conditions elsewhere. At the September regular meeting of the school board, I'd cited data demonstrating just how far our current salary schedule has fallen behind our comparable districts. Over the last six years, Wayzata, Minnetoka, and Eden Prairie have added anywhere between 15.4% and 18.48% to their salary schedules. Over that same period of time, Edina has added 8.26%. State funding increases over that same period were 13.11%. Edina clearly has chosen to invest in areas other than teacher salaries. Let's take a quick look at career earnings. Based on the 2022-23 salary schedules, a teacher in Wayzata, Eden Prairie, Minnetoka, or Rosemont, Apple Valley, Eagan, will in 20 years make 118,000 more on average than any, a teacher in Edina. Over 30 years, this difference grows to $184,000. That is the current financial penalty for having a teaching career in Edina. If all Edina can do is match the salary increases of these districts, this penalty will continue to grow. The revolving door is real, we already see it with our special education teachers. The teachers behind me love their jobs, they love their students, they are also frustrated. They are frustrated because they see the penalty for a career in Edina and equate that to their own kid's college education, their mortgage.
Mr. Doctor, can you please wrap up your testimony?
Yeah, I got about 15 words left, okay? Or missed retirement planning opportunities. We need you to deconstruct the revolving door.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mike McCarthy. Is Mike McCarthy here? Is Mike McCarthy here?
Okay, good evening, Dr. Stanley, Chair Allenberg, members of the board, everybody over there, and the community at large. My name is Mike McCarthy, I'm a Concord teacher and a Cornelia parent. I am here, like others, to advocate again for a fair and competitive contract for our educators. It's an investment in our students, and it is the right thing to do. About nine to 10 years back, I was contacted directly by the superintendent of a competing district. They were looking to fill multiple positions at the elementary school level, and they contacted a number of Edina teachers to gauge our interest and actively recruit us. This is long before the active teacher shortage we have now. At the time, salary and benefits were comparable, and although my commute would have been better, it was a parallel move at best. So I declined, as did some others, but not all. We lost one of our most innovative and talented teachers, someone who would still be a tremendous asset to Edina if they were here today instead of with one of our competitors. Now, just last month, you heard about how the sped staff at our high school is scrambling to keep up because they're a case manager down due to a potential new hire backing out because they were offered more elsewhere. We have a teacher shortage. If schools were willing to recruit from other districts 10 years ago, when times were good, I can only assume they're that much more willing now. If I or another Edina teacher was contacted by that same district now, we'd be looking at an instant 10% salary increase and a move that is no longer even close to parallel. As a district trying to do the best for our students, we are at a distinct competitive disadvantage. As a parent of children in this district, the last thing I want to see is us becoming the farm team for Wayzata, Minnetoka, and Eden Prairie, where they poach all of our best educators and keep others from even considering signing on here. Just over a week ago, I attended Concord's Parent Night Out, which is one of our PTO's biggest fundraisers. I was there to thank parents for the support they offer, and thank them for how much they do for our schools. And I've always known how much they've done, but I was still blown away by just how supportive and how committed this community is to our schools. Our PTOs have made amazing things happen for all of our schools, but more than anything that night, I was impacted by how the parents spoke about our schools and their experiences there. Multiple people talked about how they moved here for schools, how they tore down and built new houses to be with these schools. Others shared stories about how their kids have been positively impacted by amazing educators, and others mentioned that they were completely baffled that anyone here would even consider a private school when they have the resources we have here. Not one said a thing about our vaunted AAA bond rating. People simply raved about their students' experiences with Concord and Edina Public Schools as a whole. So once again, I ask, let's work together to give our community what they desire, and our students what they deserve. Let's come together on a fair and competitive contract that will allow us to keep and attract the best educators for our students now and well into the future. We are nobody's farm team. We are Edina. Thank you.
Mike Menzel. Is Mike Menzel here? Kathy Iperson? What? I don't know who's a student and who's not a student. I, I'm sorry, I don't, I know Zoya, you're a student, do you want to come up and speak, Zoya? Are you guys speaking together or separately? Okay. Did you each fill out separate forms? Okay.
Thank you for having us. We're members of Project Earth, the Edina High School Environmental Club, and we come to you to consider approving our application for a rebate that would promote a healthier community and work hand in hand with the Edina Climate Action Plan.
Many of us rode school buses in elementary school and kids of all ages ride the buses every day as they're vital for transportation to and from school. But riding the bus can particularly cause health detriments for children at the elementary school age while they are still growing. One out of twenty kids have asthma, which is triggered by toxic fumes generated by diesel school buses.
You can slide the- You can just slide the phone.
Okay.
According to the National Institute of Health, a kid riding a school bus may be exposed to up to four times the level of diesel exhaust as someone in a car ahead of it. And it's even worse in the back of the bus during the winter where windows are closed. Additionally, the level of school bus exhaust is up to four times as much as cars. Instead, using electric school buses would significantly benefit the health of both students and bus drivers as well as the environment. It is important for Minnesota to have electric buses because of the harsh impact in the wintertime. Bus, bus drivers who have to drive the school buses every day are specifically affected by the fumes, which can have damaging effects.
When there are so many buses and when transportation routes go all across the city, it makes me feel guilty that not just me and my classmates, but my family members, my neighbors, and my community are all affected by the exhaust and pollution from the stops and starts that these dozens of buses make multiple times a day throughout our city. It feels very counterproductive to have this means of transportation that can take so many people at once, that can be so useful in bringing back energy to the grid, and has so much potential to be sustainable and yet isn't living up to such potential.
Edina is defined by excellence, and this is yet another step that we can take as a city to guarantee a better future for the children. Furthermore, it would make us yet again a model city, one that challenges citizens both in and outside it to be environmentally conscious. Thank you, and with that, we'd like to hand it off to Kathy, Mike, and Hilda Martinez. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Dr. Mike Menzel. I'm a resident of Edina for the last thirty-seven years and a retired anesthesiologist. I'm co-founder of Health Professionals for a Healthy Climate, and our work focuses on health as it's impacted by greenhouse gases. I appreciate having this time to raise awareness about an exciting opportunity for the school district to transition to some of the school buses to electric. Now's the time to pursue the EPA and state funding to get you started. As older buses are retired, this is the opportunity to consider electric. The EPA School Bus Program is the largest school bus funding program in the history of the United States totaling five billion dollars. And the EPA program will fund a significant portion for Edina, which is a non-priority school, for up to twenty-five electric school buses and the infrastructure that's needed for charging those buses. Electric school buses are a tremendous benefit to our children's health. Diesel buses have high levels of small particulate matter known as particulate matter two point five, black carbon, and nitrous oxides. Propane buses have even higher levels of carbon dioxide and carbon monoxide. Exposures to these toxic substances are associated with cancers, cardiovascular disease, and respiratory disease, to name a few. Young children's proportionally smaller body size and higher respiratory rate results in a higher intake of these pollutants, which can exacerbate symptoms of asthma and other health effects. Electric school buses allow us to reduce the students' exposure to the harmful diesel exhaust that has been shown to impact the student health and their achievement. Randomized studies have shown that by lowering the school bus diesel admissions, students have improved aerobic capacity and reduced lung inflammation, so think about that as asthma. Also, by lowering school bus diesel admissions, studies have shown improved student academic test scores and an eight percent lower absenteeism. Significantly, school bus drivers have experienced electric school buses that have experienced electric school buses state that the, that the quieter ride means quieter children on the bus, making it less stressful and a more pleasant ride for everyone. Edina schools work hard to provide a safe place for kids to learn and grow. The health and safety of our students are inextricably linked. Edina Public Schools have a long history of prioritizing a health, a healthy and safe environment for our students.
Can you wrap up, please?
Yes. The EPA Electric School Bus Program is a new tool to deliver on that promise. Thank you.
Thank you. Kathryn Iverson?
Good evening, I'm Kathryn Iverson, I'm a thirty-seven-year resident of Edina. I'm a member of Health Professionals for a Healthy Climate. The real cost of electric school buses is lower than you may think. Although electric school buses have higher upfront costs today than their fossil fuel counterparts, an electric bus can save a school district anywhere from four to eleven thousand dollars annually on fuel and maintenance costs, which can be reinvested in education program, teachers, and staff. Cost containment is an important strategy in budget decisions. The Electric School Bus Rebate Program can fund an electric bus as a replacement for diesel that is set to be retired anyway. As the school district retires any diesel bus, why not get this portion of the funding from the federal EPA program along with your fully funded charging infrastructure? And for this rebate program, applicants will not have to come up with the money upfront. The funds will be dispersed upon purchase order, not receipt of the bus. Here in Edina, we have indoor bus storage, so the district can implement indoor charging. This is a perfect setup. I spoke with a Three Rivers School District in Michigan and they found that their electric school buses' overall heavier weight and the fact that that weight is centered between the axles has made the electric school buses less likely to fishtail in snowy conditions. Consultation with school districts in Minnesota that have already implemented electric school buses from the Volkswagen settlement money told us they are very pleased with the performance of their electric school buses. So we are ready and willing to assist Edina Public Schools to apply for this rebate. Just so you know, many original equipment manufacturers, charger companies, and fleet and energy management firms track public funding information, and they support schools through the application process and will provide private funding options, all at no cost to you. The deadline to apply for this rebate is January thirty-first, twenty-twenty-four. Edina has the opportunity to join the list of school districts across the nation who've pledged to bring a better future for their students. Electric school buses are on the road now from coast to coast, covering rural, suburban, urban routes, with thousands more expected to hit the road in the coming years. This choice brings hope to our students that the future is sustainable and that we are on board.
Thank you. Hilda Martinez, Salgada.
Hello, my name is Hilda Martinez, thank you very much for having me. I'm, I've been living in Edina for the last six years. I have two children, a girl that graduated in twenty-twenty-two and a boy that is a senior in the Edina High School. And I'm here with the group of the electric buses. I forget, told you, I'm also part of the Energy and Environment Commission of the City of Edina. And I've been working in environmental issues for quite a while, basically inner quality and climate change, so I'm here to support the group that is promoting the electric buses. You know, in April twenty-twenty-two, a group of community members, together with the Edina Projects Earth, we reached, we reached out to you to talk about the EPA Clean School Buses Funding Opportunity, but we didn't have any success. So now there's a second chance, they have a new opportunity, and we want to work with you in this, in this program to, to, to try to transition the school buses to an electric fleet. This time, EPA is offering another round of rebate funding that I think the Edina School District should try to explore. In the first round, they awarded one billion dollars to more than four hundred schools in the country. For example, Michigan, that has a similar, similar weather than us, they awarded forty-four million dollars for a hundred and thirty-eight electric buses. Those buses are running successfully in the rural, urban, and suburban school district. Minnesota was only awarded one point six billion, million dollars, which is only for school buses, so I think Edina needs to act. I'm not, I'm not going to talk about the health and the climate emission improvements that these buses will have because they, they have already talked about it, but I have, I want to say that the school will have savings in the, in the cost of operating these buses. Katie already mentioned that it will cost, it will save between forty thousand and eleven thousand US dollars per bus per year in operating expenses. At the same time, by doing, by trying to apply this technology, Edina School District will be a key partner to the city to help them achieve their greenhouse gas emission goals. The, the plan established in the, in transportation strategies, they, they, they want to seek and help fleets based and operated in the city to try to establish electric buses. They have a goal of fifty percent electric buses by twenty-thirty and a hundred percent by thirty, twenty thirty-five, and this applied also to school buses. So although the application process may seem overwhelming, EPA webpage have resources to help you in every step of the way. The EPA program, it's open until January twenty-twenty-four, so I think the time to act is now. So as a member of the Edina School District, I would like to ask the Edina School Board to start that process by dedicating resources to the technical and financial feasibility to transition to electric buses and to support this transition by applying to this rebate opportunity.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you to everyone that spoke to us tonight. We're now going to move on to a report from one of our community partners, Edina Give and Go, and I'd like to welcome Carolyn Papajon. Welcome.
So do I have the same three-minute clock? I'll talk really fast. Thank you for having Edina Give and Go present tonight, I appreciate the opportunity. So should I be moving the slides or someone else moving?
Either they can move it or there's a clicker right in front of you where you can advance the slide.
Great.
As well.
So our goal, our mission of Edina Give and Go was all-around equal access, equity and inclusion for all the students that go to Edina Public Schools. And we know this is important, we know based on research that when students have access to extracurricular activities, they're more likely to read by third grade, more likely to graduate from high school, and more likely to succeed in and out of the school day. We are a partner of Edina Public Schools and we are so grateful for that partnership. That partnership is really, it comes into bearing a lot when you think about your strategy B around equity and your strategy C around whole person support. The kinds of things that we support are academic opportunities, arts opportunities, and athletic opportunities, anything that students do outside the school day and in some cases during the school day that's extra, like band or orchestra. One of our closest partnerships within this, so first of all, I just want to say thank you, the district has been an amazing partner. I've been in this position for about a year and a half, just a little less than that, but the organization's been around almost ten years partnering with this school and it's been a wonderful, a wonderful partnership, so thank you to Dr. Stanley and your whole team and everyone here for that. One of our closest partners is Edina Community Education, yay, and we provide funding so that students can participate in all kinds of programs, but many students are choosing Edina Community Education because of the quality of the programs and the access that they have there. And so by combining our funds with the funds that Edina Community Education puts in, we've been able to support almost three hundred students going through Edina Community Ed Programs in the past year. I just want to mention a few things about what we do, so we provide access, I mentioned, to athletics, arts, and academics, and really it spans almost anything that a student might choose to do with their extra time when they're not in their school classes. And part of the value of what we do is we give the students flexibility to choose what it is they want to do. We give each student who qualifies up to a thousand dollars in the school year and up to five hundred dollars in the summer, and they can choose the activity that is most meaningful to them. What we're really in this for is we really want them to learn new things, we want them to discover their passion, we want them to be able to connect with their peers, we want them to have a sense of belonging, and the why that we mentioned before is because we know it leads to really great outcomes for them in school and out of school, so that's why we want to keep doing what we're doing. What is really important, I think, to draw your attention to that you're, I'm sure aware of, is that approximately twenty percent of students in Edina Public Schools live in lower-income households where paying for extracurricular activities can be quite expensive and quite taxing, which is why our service is available, and it's, which is why the original founders saw that they needed to create something like Edina Give and Go. The issue is that we supported about six hundred and ten students this past fiscal year in K through twelve, but there are approximately seventeen hundred students who would qualify if they chose to ask for the support. So in order to keep this going and to support more students, we need to help more, you know, to raise more money. And in order to do that, I'll get to a slide on that in a minute, but I just want to mention that, we really want this to reach everybody who wants this support. So if seventeen hundred kids want this support and qualify, then we want to support all seventeen hundred students, and to do that, we really need everybody working together so that we can raise the money and we can get the word out so all these students can come forward. Just a little bit about the community impact, we helped five hundred twenty-eight students with direct grants last year, and we helped about ninety-five students through the Instruments for All program. When you combine and get rid of the duplicates, we helped approximately six hundred and ten students last year with grants. These are grants that they use, micro grants that they use so they can pay for the activity of their choosing that they're most interested in. Approximately ninety-seven thousand dollars went to Edina Community Ed last year to pay for programs that students chose of their own accord to participate in, that could be anything from summer kids club to robotics camp to chess club to dance class. There was another thirty-four thousand dollars that went to Edina Public Schools, that's mostly for things like instruments for band instrument rental and AP exam fees. In total, we gave about two hundred and fifty-three thousand dollars out to the community, to the program providers last year, so that the six hundred and ten students could participate in activities. And over the lifetime of Edina Give and Goes giving, which started in twenty-fifteen, we have given away one point three million dollars in these micro grants for students to our program providers. You're not going to be able to read these founding testimonials, the screen is much smaller than I thought, but just to say that, obviously, families are very grateful for the support, they're grateful for being a part of the Edina Public Schools and a school system that has this kind of opportunity available to it. And really, the quotes that we get come from elementary, from middle school, from high school. We get a lot of parents thanking us for the support for their elementary students, talking a lot about the academic support, about the sense of belonging, about having their kids be a part of a group, you know, being a part of an activity they couldn't participate in otherwise. But we also get letters, believe it or not, from high school students. We just got one recently about a student who was able to go to a camp this summer for, that was really transformational for them in not wanting to go to college before the camp and realizing that they did want to go to college. So these are the kinds of things that become possible, and I again would say that it wouldn't be possible also without the partnership with the schools, because the schools are so valuable and the staff is so valuable in helping to identify students and letting them know about this opportunity. So, last, how can you help our students? Keep doing what you're doing, but frankly, most of the money that we get for Edina Give and Go- But frankly, most of the money that we get for Edina Give and Go comes from individuals. And most of that money from individuals comes through two main mechanisms or three main mechanisms. One is our annual event, and this April is our 10th anniversary. And so we're going to be celebrating with a little more pizzazz than usual. And we would love it if you would come on April 12th. It's a Friday night at Pin stripes. And we'd love it if you would help to get the word out so that more and more folks can come. That's our number one way that we raise money that we can give to students. The other way is through Gift to the Max Day. Everybody is asking for funding. Thank you to Dr. Stanley for participating in a video with us. Anything that people can do to get the word out about that, we'd be really grateful. You can give now through Thursday to account for Gift to the Max. And then the last is our annual gear swap, which again is done in partnership with the schools. It's held at the community center. Not only is it a way to raise money, but more importantly, it's a way to help keep gear in the community and get it to folks who don't need it anymore, to the folks that do need it. So with that, I will close. Any questions, any comments? And thank you to Jenny and to Alex, who came, two of our board members. Any comments? Thank you very much.
Do board members have questions or comments?
Thank you very much.
Dan?
Oh, just saying thank you.
Just lots of gratitude.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Could I, could I ask one question?
Of course.
A quick one. Good one. Thank you, and thanks to all community members who are supporting Edina Give and Go, because it does make a difference. We don't, my understanding, which may not be correct, we don't have a large percentage of the Edina community currently contributing to Give and Go. Is that right? Okay. I think it's just a challenge. There's been so much good done by the small percentage of the community already choosing to contribute something. And it doesn't have to be a lot, right? It can be a little bit, and a little bit makes a big difference. So just an appeal to the community. It's great partnership, great work being done, and a terrific outcome, and we can all make it even better. Thanks.
Carolyn, can I ask a question? If you were a family that saw this tonight and thought I could use some help through this program, what would be the, where would a family go to access?
Can you just go to the Edina Give and Go website?
Yeah, sorry.
So you just go to the Edina Give and Go website, which is edinagiveandgo.org, and you just click I need help.
Okay.
And then it's a very simple process to do that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. We're going to move on to our consent agenda, but for folks sitting on the floor, you're more than welcome to take a seat, or if you're comfy. Okay, I just wanted to, I was feeling a little guilty. I know it's a quick out by the door, so, okay, all right. All right, just wanted to mention it. We're going to move on to our consent agendas. Is there anything anyone would like to remove from the consent agenda? Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
We will now vote to approve the consent agenda. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? The consent agenda has been approved. We're going to move on to our discussion items, and our first discussion item is the Countryside Spanish Dual Language Update. And I'd like to welcome Director of Achievement and Equity, Director Franny Bakar. I think I, Bakar, I'm sorry. Can you pronounce it for me correctly in the microphone, because I'm horrible. I apologize.
Bakar.
Bakar.
You just have to remember that I care a lot.
Bakar, I think I, okay, I apologize. So, and then Countryside Principal Karen Bergman, and some other esteemed guests that, if one of you guys could introduce everyone, that's Caroline Linden and Mr. Andrew Beaton. Welcome. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Chair Allenberg, and members of the board, and Dr. Stanley. We're here to provide an update on countryside dual language. And I have the awesome leadership, what we call it, we have given ourselves the name, I think it came from Karen, what we call ourselves, the Countryside Dual Language Leadership Team. And the dual language leadership team was created when I took on the position of Director of Educational Equity and Multilingual Learners. So Andy Beaton serves on the team. He is on-site here at Countryside with the teachers to help provide them day-to-day support. It's very fun. I've seen him pulling a wagon around. He'll talk more about the day and seeing, going from the high school to seeing him with the littles is very fun, and he practices in Spanish a lot with them. And then Karen Bergman, Principal, and Caroline Linden, who is the--
Administrative Dean.
Administrative Dean. Thank you. And so we also, as part of our team, is we do work with Amy Young. When I, she is from MDE, she's the Multilingual Learner Education Specialist. And so when I took the job on, I immediately contacted Amy Young. And two years ago, Amy Young came and presented to the board several times about Spanish dual language. And since that time, the state of Minnesota has created a cohort of Spanish, not Spanish, but dual language for schools that are either transitioning to dual language or have a track within the school that is similar to how we have chosen to do it in Edina. We're not, the whole school is dual language. And in that time, since two years ago, when we started our program, the state of Minnesota, under Amy Young's leadership, has provided some pretty specific guidance on what a dual language program would have in place to be called a dual language program. So Edina was very much on sort of the front end of the creation of a dual language program. So what is happening within immersion programming is that there have been immersion programs within the state before. Some are switching to dual language, so they're, they're, all are immersion, so it's one-way immersion, I should say. So several are switching from being one-way immersion to two-way, which is what we are at Countryside is to that two-way. And there has, in the last two years, there has been a creation of many new dual language schools tracks within the, within a school. And so Andy and I have had the chance to go out and do research and not only meet with Amy Young, but also meet with other directors or principals in districts about their dual language programming and the decisions that they have made in their dual language programming to help guide what we're bringing to you today. So there was, one of the things that helped this year was we created a structure where we have the leadership team that is really developed, really focused on program development and how we will develop the program from being a kindergarten program last year to just kindergarteners to a K-5 program. And as we continue to grow, we have an instructional team where we work very closely with teaching and learning, because we have to be in alignment with what is happening with the rest of the district. And then we have the team that supports, not me, this team that supports the day-to-day with the teachers, because they still, they need support as teachers and as countryside teachers within the building. So that is how the leadership team works. And we will, oh, on to our next slide. What is dual language immersion? Doing a quick review, because as we continue to be in dual language immersion, it is a fairly new, new concept for the state of Minnesota, and especially when we have one-way immersion in our district. So one-way immersion is French, they speak French until in third grade. I was just talking with Principal Holden, I believe in third grade, they then start to get 45 minutes of reading instruction. Difference is, with dual language immersion, there is expected to be instruction in both languages, and we'll get more into that as we go on, in both languages from kindergarten through fifth grade. So it's not a one-way immersion. Academic and content skills are aligned with the Minnesota State Standards. That's very important. We just had the kindergarten, we had a room, a gym, full of families that were interested in exploring dual language. And one thing that is important for our kindergarten parents and anybody in the district is to assure that we, what we're learning in the dual language program is aligned with state standards, just happens to be in Spanish, but it's the same standards as the rest of the students at Countryside. And we really want learning to happen in an authentic way, and they do do a beautiful job of that in the classrooms. So one of the things that is new for Spanish dual language, if you've had these presentations before, is this came from MDE, in Amy Young's work, is that in your dual language program, you should have core principles. And your core principles need to be around these things, these three areas: culture, language, and academics. You need to be able to speak to that to families. So we didn't go very, have to go very far for this, because Edina has core principles and core values. So what we did is we took the core principles and core values that Edina has, and we applied them to Spanish dual language. There is no need to create something different. So one, culture, we do have a core principle about valuing diversity. So we said culture, to develop positive cross-cultural attitudes and a global understanding. This aligns with one of our core principles as a district. Language, this is the key, is that you develop bilingual and bilateral proficiency in Spanish and English. This is where dual language becomes very different than one-way immersion, because it wants the students to be, we want students to be bilingual. They can read, speak, write, read, speak, write, listen, and all of, in both languages, to a high degree. And then academics, it's to develop academic proficiency in Spanish and English. We want them to have academic English and academic Spanish. And then to develop critical thinking skills in school and beyond. Why dual language? There have been a lot of studies about dual language, and one is it improves cognitive, cognitive development. There have been many studies that have shown that students who are speaking two languages, learning two languages, become cognitively more flexible, as they call it, which encourages greater cognitive development. And that is a benefit of starting with two, two languages at a younger age. It also raises academic achievement. There have been long-term studies about students who have learning two languages, and they tend to achieve higher academically over the course of the program, so over time, not like right in kindergarten, but over the course of the time, as a result of that flexible cognitive thinking that they've developed. And then lastly, you develop bilingual skills into adulthood. People hear me say a lot, it's like, right now, I believe, one in, one out of every 10 students in the American education system is a multilingual student. That is only predicted to increase, so it might be a really good benefit to develop bilingual skills as you continue to move into adulthood.
Thank you. Okay, good evening. I have the next few slides. So last year, we were thrilled to welcome our inaugural class of kindergarteners in the 22, 23 school year. Those kindergarteners are now first graders, and we welcomed our second class of kindergarteners this fall. And it is just a joy to see the progress from that first day a year and a half ago to where the kids are now. It's just amazing, the progress that they've made. So we are adding a kindergarten class each year. The kindergarteners roll up. The first graders will then become second graders, which will become third graders. So this is just an illustration of how we will be building out that program and when we are complete in four years, so. And as Dr. Bakar, I don't know if you're a doctor, sorry. You seem very smart to me. Director Bakar, sorry, excuse me, spoke a little bit about the uniqueness of this dual language program. And this is an illustration of an example of the language allocation. Each program can be just a little bit different, but in our program, our development team has determined that we would like to be a 20/80 in kindergarten and first grade, which means 80% of students' day will be in Spanish. And we'll talk a little bit about what fits into that 80% in just a minute. But 20% of their day will be instruction in English. And again, we'll speak a little bit about the components of that. And then moving forward, as they progress up through grade five, they will be spending additional time receiving that English instruction as well, with the goal of being bilingual, as Director Bakar explained earlier. The next slide will show you the content allocation. This was sort of a child's day. The circle is one day in a child's life. The green would be the target language at our program. It is Spanish. And in that part of the day, it's the content areas primarily, so reading, writing, speaking, math, science, social studies, and then an intervention time or a win time, a what I need time. And the specialists and some English language instruction then fits into that 20%. So in the 20%, again, this is for kindergarten and first grade, the percentage increases as students progress through the grade levels. But the specialist time, for example, physical education, art, music, media may occur in English. And also, they will receive direct instruction in English language. So things like English phonics, things like foundational skills in English as well. And so that would be what a student would experience in kindergarten and first grade, and then increases, the English increases as students progress through the grade levels.
All right, good evening. I'm, I'm going to take a little bit of a pause from the slides for a minute and tell you that I feel like we have a complete plan that we're working through now. You know, when we started this two years ago, just kind of figuring out what was the day-to-day going to look like, and what did we need, and how many desks, and how will we get those kids in there? So many of those kind of day-to-day decisions are the things that, that we live in, in the day-to-day as, as school folks. And one of the questions that would continue to come is, what about the other? What about the planning for what's happening moving forward? And I feel like we, in, in, Dr., or Dr., Director Bakar, we actually have, we're, we're going to get you that yet. We are. Yep. I, I feel like we have that direction, we have that support, we have kind of both parts of the planning happening in, in tandem now, instead of it being, okay, today we're going to worry about this, and then we'll worry a little bit about this, and then we'll, you know, kind of go, go back and forth with that. So I, I appreciate the fact that it feels like we are, are in a different phase of our planning, and I think that that feels good. And I think it, it speaks to those decisions that we were making in the beginning about what does the day-to-day look like? And now we've got the, we've got the vision to say, okay, and what's it going to look like when these little pumpkins are fifth graders? Or what's it going to look like? This is your next plan. What's it going to look like when they're in middle school and then high school and so on? So anyway, just a little editorial. Thank you. Some of the things that we've talked about tonight is the fact that this is a dual language program. Dual language, two languages, both English and Spanish. Our student population within the program matches that plan as well. When, when we chose a dual language program, we were saying we have a target language that is Spanish, but we also have speakers coming in who are English speakers primarily in their home language. So the, the goal of dual language programming is that you have students representing both Spanish home language and then other home languages as well. So as we, as the program develops, over time, we will reach that 50% of our students are coming from Spanish home language environments. And then the other half, or the other 50% of our students are coming from primarily English-speaking homes, but other languages other than that Spanish home language. So again, the goal is to get to 50% of, of each, and a lot of our processes are actually working, working to make that goal a reality for us. We, we plan the lottery process for our students coming into the program around that 50%, English 50%, Spanish-speaking home language speakers. And primarily, actually, 100% of our students within the program are Edina School District residents. The lottery process provides for 24 students who are identified as Spanish home language speakers, or they have some sort of Spanish experiences in their past. Maybe they attended many years of a Spanish preschool, or a home daycare, or maybe a family experience that they bring with them. And then those other students, the other 24-- And then those other students, the other 24 students in each of our incoming kindergarten classes represent other home languages. Students not initially offered those spots. We have 48 spots to begin with. We maintain that waitlist, very much like any of our other choice programs in the district. So, and we do have a waitlist currently, both for our current kindergarten class as well as our first graders. So, this next slide talks about where we're at right now. And again, we want to be 50% of each. I remember back when we started, Amy Young from MDE said, "If you're at 20 or 30% in those first few years, you're on track. That program will grow, that interest will grow, those numbers will change." So, in looking at our specific numbers right now, we're fairly typical in what is represented. Our current kindergarten class, we have 48 students, of course, two classrooms of 48. And 27% of them, or 13 of those students, represent those Spanish home language speakers or those students who came in and showed us that they had some proficiency with the Spanish language. So, we're on track. We're moving that forward because as you look at our current first-grade class, last year, as they were coming in as kindergarteners, we actually were at about 23% Spanish home language speakers. And two of those families have moved from the area, and we did not have Spanish language speakers to replace them with. So, our current percentage with that first-grade class is right now at 19% of our students are Spanish home language speakers or, again, have that level of proficiency that we know that there can be considered in that category. So, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Beaton. He, we've been handed a gift this year in his day-to-day support of us. Being able to have this support onsite has truly been a gift.
Buenas noches todos. Es mi placer compartir el trabajo de los estudiantes y maestros a la escuela de inmersión en español. So it's, I've been practicing. So, thank you. So I wanted to share, I think mostly tonight, thanks for the opportunity to share the great work that's going on. First, some thank yous. I want to share some thanks with Community Ed, Dr. Leland, for the sharing of their space. Been super great hosts, wonderful hosts. And Leah Byrd's been a wonderful partner in ELC, so that's continuing. So I just want to say thank you. Special people like Heather Larson and Jane Wiegand from the Welcome Center, who have been supportive of our students and families, and just raising their hand all the time to help the kids that are here. So some thank yous for them. I want to make sure I emphasize that the dual-language program is very much like an elementary school at Countryside and the daily schedule that you'll see for students that are involved in specialist time in the morning and Countryside. Teachers come over for physical education, music, and art. They have morning meetings, which they call Circo, Circo Manana. They have literacy and math blocks. They do centers and rotations in there, just like at Countryside. Science and social studies in the afternoon. They have writing time. We've now created a win time specifically for the dual-language program, which is wonderful that we have a bilingual teacher that can do some support and intervention in both English and Spanish. And then they go home at the end of the day. There's some pictures up here, just about typical day. There was celebrations on Dia de los Muertos. There was a field trip that they went to, to a corn maze and an apple orchard. They like to look at pictures of my dog, you know? So it's wonderful. So some of the same issues and celebrations that you have, that I had at the high school, happen at the elementary level, so it's wonderful. And some of the challenges you have, it's just shorter, shorter kids at the elementary level sometimes. But some wonderful things. I'll leave it off and I'll send it back to Karen. Thanks for the support and the opportunity and Franny's leadership. One of the things they call all of us at Spanish Immersion is Profes. You know, Prof. Alex, Prof. Vero, I'm Prof. Andy. And a student thought it was very funny to call me Prof. Candy. So that's, and I said, that's because I'm so sweet. And everyone loves candy. So, I'll leave that off. So, back to you.
Oh, before I hand it back to Karen, I wanted to quickly add, one of the wonderful things that Karen and Caroline have made sure happened this year is the students do, when there are activities at Countryside that are happening, they get on a bus and they go over to Countryside to join their classmates. And I, the two teachers from last year are incredibly grateful that we are making that happen this year because that makes them feel even more like part of the Countryside community. So they get to, they get to take little field trips to the school that they will eventually be at full-time.
Hence my slide, the last slide that we've got, just an update on our construction and what's happening with that. We have been looking forward to that day, that our Spanish dual-language kiddos are with us. And in preparation of that, of course, we have our construction that's going on. We have four additions going on our building. Two of those classrooms, we know for sure they are kindergarten for Spanish dual-language. And six additional classrooms that are first through fifth grade. And then our specialized space for our site-based special education classroom. And then our multipurpose room, of course. Every Tuesday, 9:00 AM, we are in our construction meetings, hearing what's going on, hearing what's on the schedule. And each and every day that we're there, we kind of hold our breath just to make sure that all is right, all is on the same schedule. And, of course, initially, we were planning that we would be moving our kiddos over, over winter break. And as I have said all along, having them back where they belong, or right where they belong. And supply chain issues, of course, have been, have come up for us. We have one piece to the puzzle with construction right now, and those are some very, very specialized windows that are going into the first-through-fifth-grade classroom area that is considered a storm shelter. They are not probably going to be delivered and on time to get here and have everything going on. So, back on the 31st of October, we were, we were told that those windows were not coming on time. And that, of course, directly impacts our, the area of classrooms where we were going to place our first-grade Spanish dual-language classes. So, for right now, we are planning that spring break will be our move-in time. We've communicated that to our stakeholders, primarily our parents and our kids and our staff, just letting them know that even, even though our timeline has been pushed back a little bit, we are still committed to the wonderfulness that happens each and every day in those four classrooms. And the additional supports and just all of it that goes toward getting those kids over with us. And I think the other important thing that we would want to make sure that we continue to reiterate, and that is this, that once those windows, once that specialized area is complete, we're getting them over there as quickly as we can. So, if it's before spring break, we're going to make that happen. We just, we just need to get those things here and have a little bit better idea of what that looks like. So, we are, we are hopeful. It's looking amazing. A few of you have been through, and we've been able to put on a hard hat and walk through those areas. It is now a process where we're actually talking at the building about what does this look like for when we're all together? So one of our projects with our building leadership team right now is to take a look at that overall building map and decide how are we going to team together? Our Spanish dual-language teachers have made it very clear that they want to team with their grade-level colleagues as well as the Spanish dual-language team. And so consequently, one of our next building leadership team meetings is to talk about, okay, knowing that, how are we going to map this out? Where's everybody going to be? And, of course, the other piece to that puzzle is thinking about how we fade our continuous progress program and what does that mean about the, as far as the arrangement of the building? So, the pieces are starting to come together. Now we just need our kids with us. Questions?
Do board members have questions or comments?
I have a question.
Go ahead, Director Green.
Did it come up on your thing? Oh, no. Oh, sorry. Sorry about that. I have three questions. That was great. My one question, my first question is, on the slide, you talked about 80%. 80% of the time is spent speaking Spanish. What impact does that have on our Spanish-speaking students?
You want to speak to that? You want to? Can you clarify what you mean by that?
Well, on the, on one of the slides, maybe I, maybe I didn't understand correctly.
Yeah, it was, so, 80/20. So, we kind of talked about this at the parent night. And we said, so many of our students coming in in kindergarten and first grade, what they have, they have social Spanish and they have social English. They do not have academic Spanish, and they don't have academic English. And that's why we are coming to school to learn academic Spanish and academic English. So yes, while the Spanish students have greater social Spanish-speaking skills than their English peers, they're all pretty much on the same plane when it comes to academic Spanish. And they're learning the same with academic Spanish. And they're all pretty much on the same plane with learning academic English.
Okay. I didn't know if that impacted because of the, I just was surprised that that was the split, knowing that you have kids that are then getting 80%. But it doesn't sound like there's an impact to the academic trajectory there, right? Okay, cool. And then my second, I have three questions. And then my second question is, if we lose kids in dual immersion, like we had the two, it looks like we had two students who move, are we able to fill in as those grades go and bring kids in? And how difficult is that to do?
So, we maintain the waitlist, of course. As of right now, our kindergarten waitlist is at three, is at four, excuse me. We have probably about 25 or 30 on the first-grade waitlist. We also know, and have learned from our French immersion friends at Normandale, that once kids get to a particular point in that first-grade year, there's going to come a point where we are going to want them to feel like they could join that group and do so successfully. So there is a plan very similar to Normandale, where they will actually have an opportunity to show us a little bit of proficiency as they come in and as they join those groups. In talking with Chris Holden at Normandale, they have a process. It's almost, not really an assessment, but a diagnostic that they use. So we'll be, we used a little bit of that last year during our lottery process to determine which kids had some additional Spanish experiences coming in. So, there is a process in place. We'll use very much a similar formula to what Normandale's been doing.
Okay, that's great. I just didn't know if the trajectory would be then that the class could potentially be lower than the incoming class, but it doesn't.
It's possible. It's possible. The other thing that we know is that we have families that are moving into the district or are asking to join us through open enrollment. And once our resident families are on that waitlist, then we can start adding other families who are coming to us from outside the district boundaries. And it's possible, too, that we will continue to have those families joining us, coming from other programs, other, you know, areas nearby. So I don't foresee us not having that kind of supply of people who would want to continue to be a part of our program.
Okay, awesome, thank you. And then my last question, and then I will stop. I know that you have worked really hard at One Countryside, and so it was just great to hear that connection. I just wanted to check in on the community of parents and the families because I know that that's been a concern. You guys have had a lot of disruption over the last couple of years. So I just wanted to check in and see how are all the families doing in combining? I know there's been a lot of intentional efforts.
I think we're doing well. We, you're right, intentional efforts are made each and every day. Our kids see the morning news at Countryside in both English and Spanish. Caroline's generally my Spanish speaker in the, on the morning news when I'm there or she and, or Maria Dumke are working on our news. That's something that all kids see, and it connects us. Being able to continue to bring our kids together and to talk about them or talk with them in a way of that we're all part of this. One of the very best days that we had was the last week, or last Friday of September, we did our first all-school assembly that we've been able to do since COVID. And our Spanish dual-language kiddos came over. Dr. Stanley, a few of our board members were there that day. We were so, yeah, the Hornet was there as well, yes. Taking as many of those opportunities as possible to have our kids come together and to be a part of each of the activities makes the kids know that they are One Countryside. I know our PTO is making great efforts to make sure that we have someone representing our Spanish dual-language students on the executive board for PTO. I know that some of our Spanish dual-language parents were, they had kind of their own little Facebook group. But yet, they're all still part of the Countryside PTO Facebook group as well. So, we're continuing to encourage that. And everyone just wants to be involved. You know, every time we're able to bring kids over and to bring parents in, we have our Celebration of Cultures tour night. So please join us, 4:30 to 6:00, as many of our kids that can be there will be there as well.
Okay, thank you guys so much. It's just great work.
Thank you.
Other, Director Birdman?
I just had a really quick question about, for next year. So as we continue to grow, and we're going to move into second grade, I'm just curious about the recruitment process because every year, you've had to recruit for each grade level as we've been going up. How is that going? Do you see any challenges with that, just given of the climate that we're in and so on and so forth? I just want to make sure that you're getting support the way you need to.
And you're speaking about recruitment of staff, correct?
That's correct.
Yep. Andy and I were just talking about that today. We need to get postings out there for our second-grade teachers. One of the things that we have struggled with is to have enough para professionals who can support our students, whether it be our special services kiddos or whether it's just a classroom para, not just a classroom para or a classroom para. Those are the positions that we've struggled with. But we actually just had another Spanish-speaking para join us starting today. So, I think word of mouth is helping to get that word out and those early postings as well, just to kind of get ahead of that. If I could say one more thing, we have some staff in the district. We have some staff at Countryside who are Spanish-speaking, who I think might, we might be able to give a little nudge to maybe when, when we are in some of those older grades where their experience with the language and with their teaching experience might be. So we're, we've got a few people that we're going to be tapping on the shoulder for consideration as well. Yes.
Anything else from board members?
Well, I think I can speak on behalf of the board to say how grateful we are for all of you and your work. And it's such an outstanding program you're building, so thank you very much.
We appreciate your support.
Thank you. We're going to move on to our STEAM update. And I'd like to welcome up Assistant Superintendent Dr. Randy Smazel. Oh, and you got your promotion to doctor. Yes. Dr. Randy Smazel, and our Director of Teaching and Learning, Director Jody D. St. Hubert. And some other guests that I will let Dr. Smazel introduce. We always get surprise guests, so I don't, I'm.
Good evening, Chair Ellenberg. Superintendent Stanley, our school board members and community. Super excited here to provide an update about the board, about our STEAM work. I'd like to introduce a few folks that we have. So down on the far right, Mr. Mark Carlson, who's one of our curriculum coordinators inside of our Teaching and Learning Department. Dr. Kara Rickenberg, our Highlands Elementary Principal. Alison Knapp. We got Snap back there. Alison Knapp, one of our fifth-grade teachers at Concord. Larry Holland, our media specialist at Concord. Molly O'Keefe. Molly O'Keefe, one of our fifth-grade teachers at Cornelia. And Jody D. St. Hubert from Teaching and Learning. So I prepared a few slides to highlight some of the information that's in the report, but we will make the assumption that you've looked at the report. And I'll go over the slides fairly quickly, because I do want to have opportunity and time for, in particular, some of our educators in the classroom to talk a little bit about their experiment, their experience implementing one of these STEAM units, which we developed as a team or they developed, and our team is working on developing those. So we have about twenty-five different staff members that are part of the elementary STEAM design team, and I just want to say a huge thank you to that team for the work that they've been doing. Because what they've really focused on is helping to really tease out and define the framework that we want to put in place around elementary STEAM. A framework that makes elementary STEAM and Edina unique, that makes it marquee, that makes it robust, that makes it rigorous. And that's what I want to walk through tonight, is how that framework is really going to be a difference-maker for this school district. We heard through the Morris Leatherman survey at the work session about the commentary of the strong support from our families around STEAM for the school district. We also heard at a previous work session from the Career and Tech Ed Advisory Committee about the importance of these types of careers and the opportunities and the high-demand areas and the high needs. And so as Dr. Stanley often talks about literacy and numeracy as being currencies of power, the skill sets developed through the, through STEAM will also be currencies of power for our students. They will give them the opportunities to open doors, and these are going to continue to be highly-valued skills that our kids are going to develop through this programming. Thank you. So very quickly, we included just an overview of our mission vision, some strategic initiatives. Specifically, we'll jump into the STEAM design elements and then a little bit about implementation work. So for each and every student to discover their possibilities and thrive, that is about kids getting to know themselves. That is about removing barriers in the system, creating opportunities for kids to excel. And so we want them to learn about what exists out there in terms of opportunities, not only in skill-building, but opportunities in careers. We know when we look at Edina Strategic Initiative A, we see content rigor, critical thinking, student engagement, and continuous improvement as key elements to that, and we believe that can be enhanced greatly through this STEAM work. And in Strategy B, eliminating structural barriers to success, as I just mentioned, around the vision. And Strategy C, creating environments that are conducive to learning. And then Strategy E, really leveraging partnerships. So as we walk through that framework, we're going to make the case that the STEAM model that our team has worked on and has developed is a way that we are embedding these strategic initiatives throughout the school district. So let's talk a little bit about the key design elements or the critical design elements of what goes into STEAM, what goes into the units that are being developed at the different grade levels. So I'll start with a little bit of an overview of those key elements, and then we'll drill down into a little bit more detail. But to make it a little bit more sticky, we've cooked it down into four words. And those words came from goals that the team wrote about what they want the student experience to be about, what the, what they want the students to experience as they're going up through these classes in grade levels in K-5. So a component of inquiry, of integration, authenticity, and partnership. So let's drill into those elements. We have working definitions in the report, and just highlighted here briefly on the slide deck about each of these four elements of the design. And so inquiry is really about asking questions. It's really about making discoveries. It's about testing those questions. It's really about raising the level of rigor and engagement. Students often have lots of questions, and sometimes those questions, we don't have time to allow them to explore them. And other times, we're explicitly designing the environment so that they can explore them. And when kids can explore questions that they have, it is highly engaging. That is a highly-engaging lesson. Inquiry is a low-cost, high-leverage strategy for our classrooms. We know that when we really focus on integration, it does a number of things. It helps students make connections across disciplines that can otherwise seem disconnected. It is more, a more real-world way to learn that represents how learning actually happens outside of school walls, where learning and discipline is, disciplines are actually intermingled with each other. But it also makes teaching of all the vast standards that the elementary teachers have on their plate to teach, it makes it more doable, because it's creating efficiency with the teaching of all those standards. Many of you know that literacy and numeracy are the focus areas, and as a result, sometimes, science and social studies don't get as much time as we would hope that they get. So the more we can integrate those things to better, the more likelihood is, that it is, that we're putting our teachers in a position where they are able to deliver on what we're asking them to do. So the integration formula is that it starts with mystery science as our base for these units that we're building. Mystery science then is used to connect to other content areas like language arts and math and the arts. Our formula would include two cornerstone units at each of the grade levels. We, we are starting in grades three, four, and five, and then we will work backwards to K-1 and 2. So across the system, twelve different in-depth STEAM cornerstone units as students move through elementary. And we have many grade-level integration teams that are working, and we'll hear from one in a, in a moment. That includes a classroom teacher, a media specialist, and another specialist typically. Another element of the design is the authentic learning opportunity. And when we say authentic learning, what we are really focusing on are real-world issues, real-world problems, and incorporating them into those units. When you have authentic learning opportunities, it naturally increases engagement that students have, because they know that what they're working on is real, and it's meaningful, and it's powerful. We included some examples of what we mean by authenticity, but these aren't necessarily examples that at this time are systemic across the school district. We are defining which of these authenticity, authentic examples will be powerful to include into units, but we're just trying to provide a few examples of those. I may have, Kara, of course you know about Student Spaceflight Experiment Program, and that we launched our first experiment into space last Thursday evening, and we now have student, Edina Student Research. I mean, it is crazy. It is off of Earth, and it's on the space station. Like that, you have to admit, that is pretty crazy. It's docked. It docked Saturday morning, and the astronauts tomorrow are going to start running the protocol that the students wrote and carry out their experiment. We have the next year's round of projects down to three finalists, and tomorrow, we will also be sending those three finalists on for national review and national judging. And we have an elementary finalist team. We have a middle school finalist team and a high school finalist team. So it is just absolutely fantastic. But that's real. That's real stuff, because in, in the lifetimes of our students, they will travel to space. They will have opportunities to explore space, and they will know people who are living in space. And humans are going to need to know a lot to be able to do that, and who better to figure that out than our Edina students? Kara, could you talk a little bit about the trout project and why that's authentic, how it involves inquiry, and how professionals have been a part of that journey?
Yes, definitely. I was very fortunate in my previous district to work with trout in the classroom. And as soon as COVID passed, we were able to set it up at Highlands. And if you've been to Highlands in the last couple of years, you've seen a seventy-five-gallon tank right outside of the main office. And it is a partnership that involves multiple different agencies, multiple different professions. So right now, our fourth and fifth grade teachers are working and getting geared up with the Minnesota Department of Natural Resources, because we have to have a special permit in order to have trout eggs at school. So December 6th, the trout eggs are arriving. Our students, our elementary-age students are learning about the carbon cycle and the nitrogen cycle, typically standards saved for high school. And so they're able to describe them in elementary terms, but also understanding the impact that they have on, on keystone species of brook and rainbow trout. Our students are working alongside, actually just last week, with Nine Mile Watershed Educators and Hennepin County Watershed Engineers to understand macro invertebrates and bio-monitoring of our streams. And in fact, we walked the students down to Highlands Park, just down the road, and the watershed specialists were shocked of the macro invertebrates that they found. Like, their excitement as an adult and as a professional, the kids came flying into my office explaining that they had found this species, and they couldn't believe it. I'm like, how do you even know? And so talking then about their water quality and being able to understand the wetlands and the impact. And so one thing has led to another to another, and it has spread. I had two staff set up the tank last week, and they have a sign on it that the trout are coming December 6th. And the day after, there was a whole pileup of children outside of the tank jumping for joy that the trout were coming. And so, you know, it's, it's more than just math in a silo. It's more than just writing in the silo. It is a full, complete inquiry-based, authentic experience for our students. And they are learning right alongside professionals in a myriad of categories. And so they'll continue to learn with them along this, throughout the school year. And then in April, when we go to release the trout down in Framington, they'll understand, see, they'll do a, a whole landscape assessment of the area to make sure that it is the correct spot. And so it's, it's very complete and, and a very STEAM-y unit.
So one of the reasons I wanted Kara to talk about that is to, to just be able to articulate some of the things that we're exploring, some of the things that we're exploring for systemic applications. So the, one of the discussions we'll continue is, is this something that we can really vet out and grow into a unit that all of our schools can participate in? Right now, it is a pilot in a school, but this is what we're trying to build, is something that is consistent and systemic across all of the schools. And that's what the cornerstone units are really about. In terms of, I don't know if you've ever heard of Citizen Science, but Citizen Science is an opportunity for our kids to participate in research projects that are happening across the globe. And so our kids can be involved with collecting data around the butterfly census or water mentoring, monitoring, or weather monitoring, or water quality assessment across the globe. And so it's another opportunity to bring realness into the classroom. And so there's a lot of resources that we are exploring that can help make that authentic connection, which is, again, one of the key design elements. And then I'll speak to the last one, which is really about partnership. We know that we have teacher teams that are partners. We know we have kids working in groups that are partners, and our teacher teams are working across schools and across the district. But the partnership we really want to augment in here is the partnership with professionals. When we can bring scientists and engineers and artists and technicians and authors into the classroom, now you are continuing to raise the level of expertise. You are, you are creating a place where you have real-time professional learning and development with the teacher, and it's an opportunity for students to not only get career exposure, but even at a young age, to even start to build their professional network by understanding these connections of different people who work in these professional fields. And we believe that is a critical element that, again, takes this above and beyond what we've seen in other school districts. So we've been working on this for a while, and I'll probably keep working on this until this goes. There we go. Okay. So our focus is grades three and five right now, and we feel like over the next couple of years, we can keep vetting out and building systemic, common units across the district, and then really provide robust, deep professional development for our teachers, so they have an opportunity to not only learn about those units, but more importantly, really have deep, robust understanding of inquiry skillsets, of skillsets that help them figure out how to integrate and integrate lessons and content from other subject areas along with other teachers. And so we know that there's going to need to be professional development along the pathway. And then again, a few years out, really then focusing on the K-2. So this is a long runway. This isn't a short runway that we're presenting to you. So building STEAM capacity, what does that look like? Probably five days of some pretty intense training. We've looked at what some other districts have done around some of these efforts. Inquiry questioning, integration, the cornerstone units, and again, a focus on 3, 5, and then K-2. We've also explored a partnership with our Ed Fund. We're in early stages of that, but really looking at that as a way to support some of the professional development costs for teachers. With that, I'd like to turn it over to Allison and Lori and Molly to talk a little bit about one of the units that they developed. And feel free to speak about, you know, how inquiry plays out in the unit, how some of these different design parameters play out, the integration, the authenticity, the partnership. So with that, here you go.
Glad to be able to speak about this tonight. It's been an ongoing part of the journey to see it start from the beginning to where we are now. And it's been really exciting to connect with people within my building, outside my building, to implement this. So on the slide there, there are a couple of pictures that show, one is, actually, it's a link to the slide deck where this all kind of came to be, where we kind of started putting all the pieces together. It focused, started with the Mystery Science Unit that focused on Spaceship Earth and the patterns that exist in the solar system and the Earth's orbit, et cetera. And through that, and talking with Lori, our wonderful media specialist, we realized there was a number of literature connections, both in picture book form and chapter book form. And then we started realizing some of the other connections that were with social studies, we realized we can cover some of our standards for social studies that have been explicitly developed in the state of Minnesota around our Native American heritage. And so we have dovetailed that in, and so there, the integration is coming in through literature, through social studies, through science. And then we also partnered with our art teacher, who's developed a couple of art projects that focus on solar system, that focus on, she partnered with us on the space station project. So lots of integration happening. And then the inquiry part with the space station project. For the second time, we were able to do that, and that just worked beautifully with the whole space idea and theme. And the lesson in gravity took on a whole new meaning, that Mystery Science does. We, we used that as a springboard to talking about microgravity. So that was a wonderful opportunity to incorporate the partnerships and the inquiry learning and the authenticity piece, so.
Hello, Lori and Molly. Dovetailing.
Do you want to go to the next slide? Thanks. As the media specialist, I can talk a little bit about the integration of subject matter. In the Media Center, each week I plan a lesson in connection with what's happening in the classroom. We most recently have taken a look at not only the traditional Greek and Roman myths around the constellations, but we were able to do some really cool lessons on the Ojibwa and Dakota constellation myths and the pictures that the Dakota and Ojibwa saw in the stars, which was a real cool connection to literature. And then now, we've more recently are using our robots to write programs that simulate the movement of the sun around the Earth and the moon around, I mean, the Earth around the sun and the moon around the Earth, with the students planning out stops along a three-hundred-and-sixty-degree circle, planning out where the robot needs to stop along the way to demonstrate or explain the eight different phases of the moon, for example. And so they're creating an animation that shows the phases of the moon and names each of the phases of the moon as the robot moves around the circle. And so that's been a really fun connection. It just makes what we would ordinarily be doing with the robots a little more meaningful and powerful when we're able to do it in connection with what's happening in the classroom. And then our art teacher wasn't able to be here today, but yeah, she, on the slide, you can see she's done a really fabulous watercolor project where the students used a technique to depict each of the planets in the solar system. a technique to depict each of the planets in the solar system as one of her projects. And then she'll be doing another one too, in connection with the designing the patch for the space program.
We heard all about the dome effect in art. I didn't know that was even a thing in art. Now I know about the dome effect in art, so.
And then I've also, as the media specialist, just had a lot of fun just researching and selecting literature, picture books, chapter books for literature study that are being used in the classroom as well. That's been really, really fun too, to be able to use my, or share my expertise in that area with the teachers in the classroom.
And Molly and I connected at Workshop Week, and we talked about this being what we were doing. And now we've been able to kind of reach across town, and we've been, and so she's jumped on board from afar to kind of put some of these pieces in place, space station, other pieces, so.
The art teacher is not here, but then I got to be pulled up here, so. No, I feel very honored. I was just here, and I am working with them. And so I just wanted to say a few things, but it is truly an honor to work alongside amazing people, amazing educators. So as I'm sitting here listening to this and thinking, what could I possibly add? I'm just thinking about how kids are changing. They're different. COVID has changed a lot of things. And to speak to the inquiry part, kids want to fill in blanks. They want the worksheet where they can find the answer and fill in the blank. And these things that we're hearing about tonight with STEAM, it is not that at all. And they are engaged, and we have their attention. And the SSEP was intimidating last year. You know, it was not sprung on us. We were offered, you want to do this? And a lot of us jumped in. It was a lot to present and make accessible to fifth graders. And then some of us decided, yeah, we want to do it again, and had the opportunity, you know, what do you need? How can we make it better? And I just think that these things, so SSEP, I'm all on board with trout in the classroom. I want to make it happen. Citizen Science, I've never heard about it. I'm interested. I just think we need more of these opportunities where we're able to focus on this inquiry and grab kids' attention, because there are a lot of things trying to get their attention. And I think that we have a lot of great opportunities that we can leverage. I love the cross-curricular, because we have all this expertise, we have all these people that want to work together, so however, we can efficiently do that. I just think we have a lot of things that we can tap into, and I'm just really grateful to work alongside these educators, Dr. Smazl, Dr. Rickenberg, Mr. Carlson, you're down there, you're amazing. So thank you for letting me come up, and thank you, art teacher. Hope you're doing well wherever you are. Thank you for a moment at the mic.
Thank you. And Mark, I'm going to pitch it to you to talk a little bit about the rubric idea and using that as a mechanism to provide feedback to our educators who are designing these units, if you could speak to that a little bit.
Thank you, Dr. Smazl. So one of the things that we've, as we've been developing these units and really trying to hone in on what we want them to look like, and as we talk about these four words, what we've done is we've tried to develop a rubric, really to be able to look at these and really evaluate, are they really truly getting at what we're looking for in the classroom? So that's kind of the next step, next phase of this process, is taking a look at what has been created. How can we kind of really, if it's missing something, add that something to it? If it's going too far in some areas, how can we rein it back in, such that we can get a project together, or two projects at each grade level together, that really get at exactly what we want? And then get those implemented in the classroom, and then iterate around those. So if they need changes, we can evaluate that, make those changes, make them better on a year-by-year basis. But really, we want to make sure that we have a consistent, replicable system across all six of our elementaries. And that's kind of what is part of the hard part of this whole process.
Thank you, Mark. With that, we'll turn it back to Chair Ellenberg to see what questions our board has.
Great, thank you. Board members, what questions, comments do you have?
I have one.
Director Green?
Yes. Thank you guys so much for coming and presenting this. I know you guys had presented an update a little while, I don't know when that was, but it was a while back. But I just, this presentation was so good at seeing the vision and being able to see it played out in the classroom and where students are going to go with it. And I love the example of not filling in the blank and really pushing students to do that, and really seeing that play out in this, in the way that you guys presented the, just the, how this all looks out there. So I really appreciate that, because I know that was, I had asked that last time, so I just wanted to follow up and say, you completely delivered on that. So, and then my other question is, is that planet a student's artwork, like from our student?
Nothing.
Okay. That's pretty amazing. It's pretty amazing. I keep looking at it, like, that must be a sample.
You should walk down, it's a matrimony in the main hallway.
I would buy that.
No, it's beautiful, isn't it?
It's really beautiful. So anyway, thank you guys. I have no questions.
Director Beadmore?
Thank you for this presentation. I agree. It is exciting to see the excitement about trout and about, you know, the space unit. I just want to say, I know that that's a lot of work to create these units, a lot of work. And it's, as a teacher, I can imagine it's exciting, because it's something new, and if you're, you know, if you're excited about the topic, it can be really fun. When I looked at the implementation timeline, I just want to be cognizant about what we're asking our teachers to do right now, especially our elementary teachers. So I know that's top of mind for administrators too. As a board member, I want to say thank you for the time you're putting in, and also just to be aware of the timeline of the reading and the science and all the exciting things that we're doing, so. But thank you for the work that you're doing, and thank you. I know the zoo field trip last week was a huge hit.
That has, we have other teachers across the district that are doing that now too, the zoo STEM project as well.
And that's what it's exciting to know, that our kids are going to have a unified experience with this, that it's not just at one of the schools, that when they go off to our middle schools and our high schools, that there's that consistency. So thank you.
Yeah, and we know that part of our discussion has been around, how do we approach this from a systemic nature, so that truly our kids are getting these opportunities regardless of school, regardless of teacher? And so that's been part of the discussion, part of the design. And then another part of it is, which I think you're speaking to, is how do we get our teachers really excited about this? I mean, that is really a critical element to this, because we're trying to make what we're already asking them to do easier to do, better to do than it is today. And so that challenge is really about, how can we design these different units so that our staff are excited about it? And that's, again, that's a big part of the discussion.
That's right. I'd like to add that perspective from my years previous to Edina. I was that program coordinator for an environmental education STEM, and was able to create a strategic plan focused for pre-K through 12th grade in a school district. And I left there 13 years ago, and it is growing leaps and bounds. And, you know, I have colleagues that will call me, friends and colleagues, that will call me and say, hey, remember when we did this? This is what we're doing now. And so it creates a different fire of enthusiasm and engagement, not only for our children, but also for our staff. Then I was able to create a STEAM-focused elementary school in a different district, very different than my first one, very different than this one. And what I learned in that experience is that when you provide opportunities of integration, inquiry, authenticity, it creates a limitless and labelless opportunity for all of our kids and all of our children, regardless of their capabilities, are able to have success. And that is, that's the bottom line. And, you know, how we have been framing this and looking at this, having a marquee STEAM-focused program, there is no other district around the state that has it such as this. And that's why I just really wanted to emphasize, because I know a lot of people that do STEAM stuff and STEM stuff. And what we have started to talk about and do when talking to the teachers is very impactful. And so I really appreciate that you brought that up, because that's what, you know, elementary teachers, it's a unique opportunity. When new standards come out, it's different in the middle and high school. All of our elementary staff teach all of the standards, and so we're always impacted. But the uniqueness and the really super cool opportunity is the integration piece of it.
And as we're working on these units, we're looking through the standards, and we're matching the standards to what we're doing, so that we can suggest to our colleagues, you know, you can do this now instead of what you had been doing. So it's not an "and," it's an "in place of." Because we are very cognizant of the concerns our colleagues have for adding to the plate. And so we are working very hard to try to create something that our colleagues can take and use without feeling like it's another thing.
Any other questions? Great. Well, thank you very much for the update. This is exciting work.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. We're now going to move on to our Data Metrics Plan. We have Director of Teaching and Learning, Jody D. St. Hubert, and Greg Gusweiler are Teaching and Learning Data Programming Analyst and Coordinator.
Good evening, Chair Ellenberg, Director, Directors, Dr. Stanley, I almost said Director Stanley. Colleagues and community members, we are excited to be here in front of you today to get a chance to highlight the Data Metrics Plan. As you have all experienced, it's a very comprehensive report that's in front of you. And it's broken down in the board book, agenda items, as an early learning component, an elementary component, a middle school component, and then a high school component. We broke each of those down so that it was more digestible to read in each of those categories, and yet you'll see themes throughout the whole entire report. And because there is so much detail in each of those individual components, our goal here with our presentation that we have in the slides is really to help us all understand how the Data Metrics Plan will be used within our system, and really not the detail of the data points. But the entire system is designed to ensure we have a cycle of continuous improvement for Edina Public Schools, and in continued growth plan, in a comprehensive assessment When we presented the Data Metrics Goals, which seemed like forever ago in September, we talked about the Data Metrics Plan and the Data Metrics Goals being part of a visual of a funnel. And so the slide presentations are going to take us through each layer of the funnel, and again, just really try to show and emphasize how the Data Metrics Plan is used within our system for continuous growth for our students, and continuous support really for the amazing, incredible educators that we have in our system, who we've heard about so much this evening. This slide specifically shows how the comprehensive assessment plan and all the different components of the funnel are connected to our strategic plan. It's really, can be looked at not only as a funnel, but roadmap of systems that Dr. Stanley has helped us put in place in our system in order to journey down the strategic plan. So the Data Metrics Plan is a high-level component, or the top of the funnel, as we've referred to before. It really captures multiple data points that are broken down by demographics at every single level, that aligns with a strategic plan, and then the action steps that are also behind the high-level key components of our strategic plan. The intentional use of the multiple data points allows all stakeholders to examine where we're going, and as I mentioned, continuous improvement. This slide will be a pattern throughout that matches the funnel. So if I go back and you see the top of the funnel is the District Data Metrics Plan, this goes to the two parts at the top that are really highlighted in white, show us the key points of development connected to the District Data Metrics Plan, and then the two points that are highlighted in green that have the arrows are really the points of how we'll be continuing to update you as a board and our community on how the work is happening in each category. So the District Data Metrics Plan we mentioned when we talked about the goals was really formulated in collaboration with the board and our district instructional leadership team. And as I mentioned a couple of times already, it's broken down into a lot of strategic data points to have a demographic breakdown, and to help us dig deep into what targeted action steps we can put in place. We will, we shared this as well in September, but there'll be a cadence to sharing the District Data Metrics Plan and the District Data Metric Goals. So it'll be in every year, every other year cycle that we'll reporting out to the board. Then as we go to the next component of the funnel, this gets down to the layers of how we're looking at the Data Metrics Plan, again, showing you how it's being put into use. The CDEP is the Continuous District or Department Improvement Plan. And so every cabinet member is working with their departments in order to create continuous improvement plans, and using superintendent goals that were created in collaboration with all of you, and the District Data Metrics Plan, to determine what those goals will be, and the action steps to achieve them with their departments. That is this slide, which I will skip through, because I just highlighted it. And then another component, the District Strategic Plan and the development of the CDEP comes in some of the areas that are specific to each department in the strategic plan. So for example, teaching and learning directly correlates with Strategy A, and we have a lot of actions that we're digging into on a regular basis, the Data Metrics Plan, in order to bring the next steps forward. We'll be continually updating the board on these things in a variety of different ways. So a couple of ways you've already seen this year is in, last month, in October, Director Bakair and I presented on the World's Best Workforce and the A&amp;I Achievement Integration Plan, and you saw that those, a lot of what you saw in there was directly connected to the September goals that you saw in the Data Metrics Goals. Also, lots of other reports will come throughout the year. For example, tonight, we'll have a science update after this report. We will continue to hear about ELA and where we are in that process with implementation. So that highlights action steps and the specific components that we break down in the Data Metrics Plan that will come to the board for highlights outside of that, you know, the year cycle where we're presenting at a higher level in the fall. Then the next layer of the funnel, and the only place I get stuck with in the funnel is like, sometimes the funnel comes down, right? And there's like, you can't go back up. But within this funnel, there is a cycle, right, of like, each part of the funnel feeding both the top and the bottom parts below it, or even, you know, it's all connected, I guess, is my point there. So, but once we funnel down from the department goals that we have in connection to the Data Metrics Plan, we're looking at building goals. And Dr. Smazl has presented on where we're at with our continuous school improvement plans at our last board meeting. And so there's a lot of connections in what we've heard already this fall to the Data Metrics Plan. Each building is looking at the Data Metrics Plan, and they're looking carefully at the data points in the Data Metrics Plan, and directly how they connect to their individual schools. And so they might be finding, although this report is not broken down to individual schools, our individual buildings are able to break the reports down, or the data down to their building level because of the great work that Greg does for us, and develop very specific plans within their schools. And that's highlighted here on this slide. One point of noting here in the action steps, right, is that those school improvement plans, Dr. Smazl mentioned last month, that he regularly, he's once a month reviewing those with our principals, and Dr. Stanley is meeting three times a year, and it's part of those conversations. So there's the constant engagement in how's it going? We also, at our instructional leadership meetings, have the opportunity for our principals to share with each other, what are they doing, and action steps around the Data Metrics Plan, and what's the data? Because Greg has made that so accessible for us, that's showing improvement that we're always able to monitor. And then we go to this part of the funnel, and it just keeps, again, it keeps going down, and even though it keeps going down in a funnel, and you can't pull back up, we can in our, in our special Edina funnel. So then this goes down to PLCs and grade-level conversations around collaborative learning cycles. So PLCs are looking at what their building data is, right? And it just keeps funneling down, and it funnels down where the PLCs are meeting on a weekly to bi-weekly basis in their buildings. Teachers are working with both principals and administrative deans and their grade-level teams in order to look at what their goals are, and our progress monitoring the data that they've set as well, directly in the classroom. And finally funneling down to the E there at the bottom of the funnel, kind of jumping around, sorry Greg. But the E obviously stands for our wonderful Edina, but as we go to PLCs... But the E obviously stands for our wonderful Edina, but as we go to PLCs, that gets to each and every single classroom looking at the data of their students and each and every classroom looking at each and every student and how we can continue to make sure that we're reaching our vision and our mission. And our Data Metrics Plan is that comprehensive assessment system that really, again, funnels down from all pieces to get to that. I cannot acknowledge enough the incredible work that Greg has done for our system in order to make this possible. And so he's going to highlight a couple of key things like within the structure of how it looks. And then he'll turn it back to me for just a couple more points before we turn it over for questions and feedback. I'm going to do this actually and then hold this.
All right. All right. Thank you. I just kind of wanted to go over just a couple of foundational changes to the report to hopefully make it a little bit more ingestible, make the readability a little bit better so that we can really take the Data Metrics Report and really use it at each and every grade band level. So the first of the changes that I made to the other report was I added some interactive elements in the form of the table of contents at the top of each section. So if you have somewhat of a interest in a particular area, you can very quickly find and jump to those areas. And then I also added table of contents, links or interactive links to the table of contents as well as the appendix so that you can kind of jump around really quickly to find the different elements that are within the report. Then also to enhance readability and ingestibility, you know, when we looked at the entire report of E-12, at first glance, when Jody and I were first looking at it, it was over 137 pages. I think it was like 137 and a quarter. And we weren't even done yet. So by really kind of taking a look at some of the formatting and creating things, you know, we shrunk it down to really be very similar to what the, in length, the report was from last year. But there was so much, because if you remember, if you recall last year, we didn't have, you know, there was a lot of the two or three analyses that we didn't have. There were some other data elements that we didn't have due to, you know, a variety of different reasons. But when we included those, it became a really dense report. Some would say kind of like, you know, a fruitcake or something. It was really, really a lot. And so the idea of breaking it down into different grade band came about. And it actually is going to be a great tool because we can take and give the Early Learning Center their version and say, hey, what do you think? You know, here's what we found. We can give to our elementary teams the K5 version, 6, 8, and so forth, right? So those are, that is a big win to really take this report and start to use it as a good tool. Some of the structural changes that happened is that last year's report, there was, the Unique Learner section was all put together, E-12 at the bottom of the report, as well as the percent in attendance or the attendance elements were included in kind of the last section. So I kind of took, plucked those pieces out and put them in with their respective grade band areas so that all those different elements by grade band are kind of isolated into one area.
Thank you again, Greg, the work that you've done. I can't, I know I say it a lot, but we can't, we would not be where we are in order to implement that funnel in the system if it wasn't for your hard work on getting all that data organized for us. I can't even begin to understand the queries. But I try when you're talking, it's like the Spanish language when he's talking queries to me. But so before we open it up to questions, on the purpose as a guiding tool to support the implementation of the strategic plan, I do want to highlight just two data points from each level. One data point of celebration and then one data point of growth. And highlighting these data points is just a mini example of what every group and each layer of the funnel is doing as they dig into the data. Teams are learning from the data and the continuous cycle of growth that comes from the assessment system is really intended to be a healthy partnership for each and every to design what we can and continue to lean into the excellence of Edina. It's designed to use and the system that Dr. Stanley has structured ensures that we do use it and again, that we use it in healthy partnerships with each other. So Greg was mentioning at the end of the presentation and then in the Board Book, each report is broken down by different bands. I'm going to start, again, I'm just going to do this really quickly, but I do want to, first, before I jump into the highlights, the positives, and then some areas for strength, each section also has a higher level even data point that you can look at. We've called it key findings and then action steps. And so there you see how we're digging into the data. And then I will just point out a couple of things that I've heard and observed as we've teamed, as we've teamed together in partnership and digging into the data. So in early learning, there's a huge celebration on page seven. Ninety-four point oh six percent of our students in our Early Learning Center are showing proficiency in the TS Gold Literacy assessments that they take. And then an area for growth or an area that we've dug into in partnership already this school year is that those same students that are in our Early Learning Center, when they're transferring to the fall, FastBridge data, they're, on page eight, it demonstrates that the level of proficiency is 73.2 percent, a good level of proficiency, but one for us to lean into of why there's that difference with the TS Gold and the FastBridge. We've asked, they're clearly different assessments, but now we can look at early learning and say they are doing amazing and what can be the next level up of support and instruction that we can provide. In K through five, the data, one highlight that is just really exciting to share is on page 27, we have 80, 80 percent. This is in the SEL area, right? Eighty-eight percent of our students in grades three through five are reporting that they have an adult that they can count on. And all of our demographic groups within that report out of that SEL data point are above 80 percent. Our SEL, not only in the elementary, but in all levels of the secondary are really consistent that our demographic groups are really similar to each other and a high point of celebration. Area for growth there in the K through five data is the demographic gap in all academic areas is large for our students of color. For example, on page 24 and 25, students in third through math proficiency on two, three of the determined math assessments shows that the highest demographic breakdown at 90 percent for our Asian students and 50 percent for our Black students. So that's quite a gap. We know that that gap exists across the state. And now that we have such concrete data, we're able to target our action steps and decrease that gap at a quick rate for our students. Actually, I'm going to even say eliminate that gap at a very quick rate for our students. Six through eight, just want to highlight that on page 18, the area of celebration is six through eight. There's a math aggressive growth from the fall '22 to the spring of '23 in the FastBridge data. That aggressive growth was 45.77 percent. And remember that national norm of aggressive growth from those two data points is 25 percent. So we nearly doubled that in our math FastBridge data for our middle school students. And then we note on page 21, our science proficiency for the MCAs is lower. And we have really some exciting work we're digging into this year as we continue our implementation cycle. So then just some highlight of celebration from the high school is that our, I think this is one that all of us probably noticed quickly, is our biology and our ELA MCA scores are remarkable. They're really outstanding, huge place to celebrate. And I also want to point out specifically on page 14, that our ninth grade FastBridge growth, again, looking at growth from fall to spring, and these are ninth graders in ELA, this was even higher than the math that I just shared, was 54.59 percent. I think we really can attribute that to our comprehensive literacy plan, the new intentional plans that have been being put in place in the secondary. And I can't imagine, because we just continue to put new action steps in place at the secondary, how that's going to continue to go for our students. But that's an incredible area of celebration. And then one area of growth that we can point out at the high school is that although we have 60.64 percent of our nine through 12 students participating in extra and co-curricular activities, the demographic gap in that participation is large. We have Asian students at 73 percent and then our Black students at 24 percent. So just another data point to lean into and recognize that we have areas for improvement so that we really are ensuring that each and every student can discover their possibilities and thrive. So again, I just share those data points, both as strength, because it's really important to celebrate data strengths. We can learn from the strengths in our system and replicate those in other places. And then areas for growth, it's important, again, that we lean into those in partnership and collaboration and that through that system funnel that we have in place, we're able to support each other and lean into areas of growth with our assessment system that, again, just helps make sure that we're reaching our vision and our mission through our strategic plan. And with that, I will turn it over for questions and feedback.
Thank you very much. Thank you to both of you and the rest of our team that's worked on this. I know it's been a lot of work. I super appreciate the PowerPoint you put together to show how it's going to be utilized through the system. I think that was very helpful. And I appreciate your additional notations about how you've put your magic touch to it to make it more user-friendly. So thank you for that. One additional added piece of context I wanted to add is the reality is this document has been about five years in the making. It started as a glimmer in the eye of some people working on a strategic plan in 2018. And to see it now as an actual piece of, it's like a piece of art. It's like amazing. But the one thing I did want to mention in case people have not been following along for five years, and I hope there aren't that many people that have been that granular, but that this is the very first iteration of this report that is populated with data and that this data is benchmark slash baseline data that we're looking at. And so you pointed out, Jody, that, I mean, knowledge is power. So there are certain things that we're going to probably see in here that aren't exactly what we want to see. There are certain things I'm sure that we're pleasantly surprised by, but I just want the community to understand that this is a jumping off point for us to have access to the data that we need to make decisions. And that is why it's so powerful. And so as a Board, I don't, I mean, the point tonight here is not to go detailed through every single data point because we can't and don't have time. But I also want Board members to think about, and hopefully we can come back and have a conversation about like, how can we utilize all this information as a governing Board? Because it's powerful information. And we see how it's going from the top of the Edina funnel to the bottom of the Edina funnel. And it's very important that we also figure out how can we best utilize this data. And I just really appreciate, again, the work that you've done. I appreciate the data points that you pulled out. And I just wanted to make sure the community understood that the data, what the data was that we were looking at tonight. So with that... Oh, I'm sorry, Dr. Stanley. Dr. Stanley?
I just wanted to just echo similar things to what you said. And to say that the reports are one thing, they're outstanding. You know, I'm just so proud of the team and their continuous work on that. The work that goes behind really deeply inculcating this into our system and to the level that it is right now, two years ago, we did not have this. Two years ago, we were talking about this. And now we have principals that are building, like she said, their continuous school improvement plans. Cabinet members are building their continuous department improvement plans. We are looking at and analyzing this data all the time. We have a comprehensive data set now that is being collected across the district. And while this is our baseline data, now we are positioned to continue to roll up our sleeves. I mean, you heard some of those data celebrations. They are outstanding. And we are positioned to continue to roll up our sleeves and just get to work. I like what Director D. St. Hubert said. We are going to eliminate achievement disparities. And we are now uniquely positioned to do that. These are the resources, these are the tools that we needed. So, you know, there are so many hands that went into this and I just really want to thank folks that are at the table and all of the other folks to get us to this pivotal point in our journey and our work.
Thank you, Dr. Stanley. Director Neville?
Thank you. And I just, I can keep this brief because Director Ellenberg and Dr. Stanley have said everything that I wanted to say. I just think this is so extraordinary and I'm so grateful for where we are as a district. We've talked about data-driven decision-making for years. Everybody talks about data-driven decision-making. This is the biggest step forward I've ever seen in what we've done. And we've done a lot of really good stuff. So it's not like this has not been happening at all. That is not true. But what it's taken to get to the report that you've prepared tonight is an extraordinary accomplishment. It's clear, it's aligned, it does show us the celebrations and it shows us where we need to go, but with evidence. And I know, we know what to do to address it. It's not just a question mark. We know what to do, but it's going to make us so much more efficient. And just some of the things that I, I mean, there's so many things to point out, but the growth for each and every that we can truly measure and celebrate, you know, if we have a kiddo who is, you know, maybe they're in the first quartile and they're making a year and a half of progress and we can measure those strands. And maybe they're still not quite at 50 percent, but what that individual did for learning and the educators who supported that student, that's extraordinary. We can measure that and celebrate it. So, and just, thank you.
Director Shaw?
Yes, I'm going to echo my thanks on this. I think when I came in four years ago, this was just starting to become a reality. And so I am really grateful. I'm grateful that we can see the progress of our students. I think it's really clear when we're talking about our younger students. And when I was going through this and going through the report we had just a couple months ago or weeks ago, I can't remember the last time we had it, I just want to share that I do, in the spirit of us all being a part of this continuous improvement and building this together, want to say that I am still somewhat concerned that the measurements that we have, especially at our secondary high school, tend to be very much lag-driven, right? These are lag measures. And compared to what we have in this report for our younger students, we are lacking in lead measures. And I am concerned still that that puts us at a disadvantage and gives us less opportunity to react to students in real time because when they're with us, it's such a short time, freshman year to sophomore year, it's a really short time. For the Board to make decisions, I just, I don't need an answer on it, but I would just really encourage you once again to look for more lead measures that can be reported out at the secondary because I think all it does is give us more opportunity to address students' needs in real time. I think it is amazing work and I am so thrilled by it. I just want to make sure that the decisions we're making for each and every student, no matter what grade they're at, are on a level playing field. And I'm concerned that right now, the lack of lead measures at the secondary level don't put us on that level playing field. So I just, I feel like I, my job is to voice that to you. That's what I see. So it doesn't mean that I'm any less grateful for all the hard work that you've put into it. So thank you.
No, absolutely. We appreciate the input and it's important that we continue to reiterate how it has to continue to grow and that all of that input will only help our students. So, thank you.
And if I could just say one thing, that the enhancements to some of our systemic pieces, you know, the integration between Schoology and Campus, which is a huge, huge part of the secondary experience, as those system elements evolve and we're able to track more granular data elements, that gives us more ability to look at those lead measures and really key in on those summative assessments to see how students are doing. And the tooling that is, that's already out there and then tools that I also create, I think, will really help to move the needle on that.
That's really, that's great news. And I just, like I said, I encourage that to somehow become a part of what the Board knows so that the Board can help make decisions in the little, you know, like I said, they're not... the little, you know, like I said, they're not there for as long as we've got them K through five or K through eight. So, thank you.
Do other board members have questions or comments?
I just did a quick one.
Hi. Oh, I'm sorry, Dan.
No, the only thing I just, you know, and it just came to me kind of tonight when we were talking with the Leatherman survey about taking risks and whatnot, and marrying that with some of these pieces here, like if, I guess to keep an open mind about how to, you know, potentially look at new and innovative things that are there would be just something that I would encourage with everything. So.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Maybe on that note, just thinking about that, is also, as this is rolling out, because this is our first sort of iteration of what this is going to be, how well are we programmed to get the feedback, right, for the people who are then going to use this information to then figure out what we're going to do, both at the classroom level, at the building level, and then up at the administrative level? I think that's where some risks also could be, if we're not solely focused on a predefined use or how that's working, make sure we're open to the feedback that then comes from that. I think that would also be a very helpful avenue. I'm sure we're going to do that, but I think that's a good reinforcement of what Dan was just saying.
Thank you. Thank you both so much. It's amazing work. Speaking of amazing work, and standing in the back for many hours, we have our K to 12 science update. Mark Carlson, curriculum coordinator. Welcome.
Thank you. This will be about 90 minutes. I hope that's not a problem.
Yeah, I was going to say 90 seconds would be awesome.
Sorry about that. Dr. Stanley, Chair Allenberg, and members of the board, thank you for giving me the opportunity to provide you with an update on the K-12 science implementation of the new standards. Gavin McLean was supposed to be with me this evening, and he was as a presenter. And unfortunately, he got called away. But I do want to just take a moment publicly to thank Gavin for all the work that he's done. As the high school science department lead, he's been involved in this process from the beginning, continues to be an incredible partner with teaching and learning as we've gone through this process. So I just wanted to make sure they knew that. I wanted him to be here to hear some of your recognition for his work, too. So I just want to thank him for that work. Just before I open it up for questions, I just want to highlight a couple of things. Number one, I would like to just say that, you know, the proactive implementation of this, Dr. Smazl, Isa Punchard were involved right from the beginning and got started on this process before pretty much any other district in the state was really leading that. I was at a science leaders workshop, and there's a lot of districts that are just not in as good a position as we are right now, as it relates to being able to fully implement these standards by the 24, 25 school year, which we are on pace to do. Number two, from an elementary standpoint, we feel very strongly that the approval of mystery sciences provided user-friendly, standards-aligned resource. It's allowed us to train our teachers on pedagogical approaches, and really to focus on what we really want them to do. And that's to kind of change that approach more towards inquiry, some of the stuff we heard about earlier in our STEAM discussion. At the middle level, we have implemented the standards. We really started implementing during that challenging 1920 school year in which we purchased Amplify for their curricular resource. They've done quite a bit of enhancements to that. We've worked through some developing of proficiency scales, which really helped us align our consistency around how we're measuring students across the middle level. At the high school level, we've now implemented the earth science course to align with the new standards from the state. Chemistry, physics, and earth science are all implementing the new standards this year. Biology is starting to implement the new standards, but they also have to be concerned about that we're still on MCA III. So that, and biology is the course that we test that on. So they're kind of more on a two-year implementation, such that they're ready to go for that MCA IV, which would be coming out in the spring of '25. So with that, I just want to thank you for the time and open it up to any questions that you might have.
Board members, questions or comments?
I've got a comment.
Director Shaw?
I just want a huge thank you. I think Director Green and I have been hearing this since the day we got on the board. And I have to tell you, I'm so excited that we are, four years later, making it happen. You guys did an amazing job. You and Gavin able to push through all of this, even during COVID and stuff. So I just want to say thank you, Mark, because it's been great to watch this happen.
You're welcome. There's just been a really, as you saw in kind of the report, there's been a lot of people involved in this process, a lot of educators that have really worked very hard to get it to where it is today.
Director Green?
Yeah, I just wanted to add one additional comment. I echo what Director Shaw said. But what also I think has been really fantastic to watch is, over the last couple of years, some of the implementation to get us to this point was happening in real time. So as a parent of a kid who's in compact science, I can tell you the difference that that has made in the spark you're talking, that that work has put in her and her desire to learn and to focus on science is none other than, I mean, it's just fantastic.
It changes.
It really is. And so to see this, where we are now, but knowing that that, we were, we were, talk about impacting students in real time. You absolutely are doing that. I can show you a result of what that looks like, who is, you know, ready to dive into high school headfirst. So I just really appreciate the work personally, but also as a district-wide. Kids are benefiting from this work. So, thank you.
Awesome. Thank you.
I just want to thank your team and just point out, both to your team and the community, the intentional work around, we talk about each and every student, the on-ramps and off-ramps for acceleration, the options our students have. It's a really unique thing that we have here in Edina, where students don't end up, once you start a track in sixth grade, you're set on that track forever. It's really amazing what you guys have done. And it's, I mean, if you compare our science program to other districts, it's fantastic. And it's not just about offering accelerated programs, or, but it's about finding the right fit for your student and your child, that right learning model. And you guys have done an outstanding job with that. And I really appreciate that intentionality. So thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else?
Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you.
We're going to move on to our policy review with Director Neville and our policy team, or committee.
Thank you, Chair Allenberg. It's policy. I love this part of the board meeting. But I want to thank our policy team and Poly Bowles for all of their efforts to review our policy every month and bring forward the review for discussion, and then later in the evening for action. If I could invite Cabinet Member Jody DeSain Hubert to come back to the table. I know you just left.
But first up this evening to take a look at Policy 425, which is staff development and mentoring. This is a policy that mirrors our MSBA model policy, and the purpose is to make sure that the district does provide professional development on an annual basis for both our staff and paras at the district and at the site level. So, Jody, if you could please walk us through the proposed edits to this policy.
So, the policy was read with an eye for clarity, and adjustments were specifically made and primarily made to the titles of the staff development committees. So a majority of the edits throughout the entire policy are to the titles District Staff Development Committee and Site Staff Development Teams. Those are stated at the outset, I think, first in Section 3, and then throughout their district committees and site teams to abbreviate that. And then there were some additional changes to align with the strategic plan wording and other policy wording on four, on page three and four, specifically under E on 425/3, page three. E talks about just the modeling of behavior expectations that ensure a positive learning environment, and that was intentionally aligned with Policy 506, if I'm remembering correctly. And then also the other section that Dr. Neville referred to was Section 8, which is on page seven. And that's the entire edition of the paraprofessional PD, which is new legislation this year that we added to the policy.
Are there any questions?
Thank you. Any questions? Fantastic. Thank you. I think that is the only one that you reviewed for this set. You do have one more?
Do I have Read Act?
Do you have?
Six twenty-one.
Oh, you do. Six twenty-one. Why don't we move to six twenty-one while you're here? Yeah, you've got enough steps. It's after 9:30. You're good.
Steps are good.
Six twenty-one is the Literacy and Read Act. This is a new policy. So again, thank you, Jody, for doing the heavy lifting to draft new policy on the new legislation.
So in consultation with our district lawyer, Trevor Holmes, this policy, the policy committee reviewed this new policy, and it models the policy really closely from the new Read Act law. And taking the MSBA policy as a guide, the changes that were made were really small and done to ensure additional clarity to our system. So on the second page, we added specifically, we added literacy coach to ensure that understanding that there's a difference between a literacy coach and a literacy lead. Literacy lead is articulated in the Read Act, but we did want to clarify that layer within the Edina system. And then it is also, and then I also just wanted to note that there was a view how long we are, oh, oh, I hadn't noticed just to celebrate how far along we are in the Read Act, and that the policy and reviewing the policy as a team really reiterated that clarity of that we are in a really good place and excited to launch the next steps. Are there questions on that policy?
I would maybe just add one comment, that it is our intention to bring this policy back to the board again next year for additional review, because it is new language. And even though we are pretty far along, we will be bringing this back again. But any questions on this one?
Do you see the frequency of reviewing this particular new policy? Is this going to be on a cadence of every couple of years or every year, or when legislation provides some requirement? Do you have any sense?
Yeah. Trevor Holmes did indicate that he does also see, foresee some changes in legislation, right? And so I would anticipate, as we monitor the changes in legislation, that it might be a more regular thing for a short period of time. And then that will get into a cadence of implementation, where it will get into a regular cycle.
Any other questions? Okay. Thank you, Jody. I'm just going to scroll back up. Sonia Saylor, thank you. You are ready to go. This is Policy 429, which is shared teaching contracts. And I don't even have a lot of summary for this. While I'm waiting for you to get settled, I think that it is somewhat self-explanatory. But if you could walk us through some of the adjustments.
Thank you, Director Neville. I will do so. Dr. Stanley, Chair Allenberg. So tonight, I am presenting a small modification that we are recommending to board policy 429, shared teacher, excuse me, teaching contracts, which is utilized when two teachers share a 1.0 teaching position. Currently, the policy sets a maximum of three years in a shared contract. And what the administration is recommending is a small modification that would allow that maximum of three years to be extended with the recommendation of the building principal or supervisor, and with the approval of district administration. It's really used, you know, like so many shared positions inside and outside of education. It's used sparingly. Right now, we actually only have two, two different partners in our district. We had three, three partners last year. We have two partners this year. Both, both sets are at the elementary level. But it works out well for some people, for different reasons, often during those years where work-life balance is a little difficult, when we have children at home as well. And we would just like to add this modification so when everybody agrees things are going well, we can allow those teachers to continue in that situation. Do you have any questions?
No questions.
I have one really quick. I'm just curious as to, given that the low numbers that you have now, do you find that that could grow in the future, given the situation with the available talent and so on and so forth that's available in the mix for education? Or do you think this is just going to kind of stay at a very low number?
I, good question, Director Bremerman. My guess is that it will actually still stay at a low level because of the fact that this is one of those policies that, being relatively new to the district, I read through it last year and said, oh, there's a three-year maximum in here. And we actually have some teachers that have been doing this for more than three years. And so we should go to the board and ask that we have a modification so that we're following board policy. And so I think there has been a bit of a practice to allow the extension. And we still only had three partners this past year and two partners this year. Any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next, I would invite Dr. Smazl to join us. We'll be looking at Policy 507 on corporal punishment.
Good evening again. A relatively short policy. We did review this policy for changes. Administration's offering modifications to be in line with model policy and statute. So some of the changes include some additional definitions, definition around corporal punishment, definition around prone restraint. And the purpose of those is to be clear about what these are inside our organization, what we mean by that. And then prohibitions with Section 4, we added this to be clear about what is prohibited related to those particular definitions in terms of responding to students across the district. And then a couple of language changes under Section 5, exceptions, and then some updated legal references for this policy.
Thank you. Any questions for 507?
I just have one quick one. I recognize why we were doing this. Do you find that once this is implemented and running, that, will there need to be any retraining or additional training in order to meet the new additions and revisions that have been made to this policy?
It's a good question. We will be reviewing it with the principals. So that will be a question that we'll seek some information from, from them.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. And we'll move on to 532. And Jody is not here. So we'll just continue.
I can cover 532, since Jody and I worked on this together. So again, 532, use of crisis teams and peace officers to remove students with individualized education program IPs from school grounds. So reviewed the policy, are offering a few changes to better represent current statute and some clarity. So just adding, eliminating the acronym in the title, adding individualized education program was one of the recommended changes we're making. And then through policy committee discussion, we talked about, even though it makes reference to an individualized education plan, there wasn't actually a definition of that in policy. So adding that as a definition inside of policy. And then a couple of other minor changes, if you go to page four, we added Section 3, which would basically describes what potentially has to be reported to Minnesota Department of Education in terms of restrictive procedures, reporting. And then again, some minor language updates on the rest of the policy, a couple of additional legal references.
Any questions? Excellent. Oh, yes?
Oh, no, I was just, I was just getting ready for our next.
I think we're.
Great.
That's good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Policy Committee and everyone that contributed. We're going to move on to our action items. Do I have a motion to approve the canvassing returns of votes for school district, the school district general election?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Do board members have questions or comments about the canvassing of school board return, school, the votes for the school board general election? We will now vote to approve the canvassing returns of votes for the school district general election. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
The motion is passed. Do I have a motion to approve the issuance of certificates of election and district election-related duties?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any board members, questions or comments? We will now vote to approve the issuance of certificates of election and district election-related duties. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? The motion carries. Do I have a motion to approve Policies 624, 708, and 713?
So moved. Second.
Do board members have questions about these? Do board members have questions about these policies? Okay. All those in favor of approving Policies 624, 708, and 713, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Policies 624, 708, and 713 are approved. Are there any board leadership and committee updates?
I just had one quick committee update. Both Director Arum and I attended the SEEK meeting, and similar to some of the data that we found in the Morris Leatherman survey, one of the topics that was brought up was concern about hiring of employees, specifically paraprofessionals, which I know that we're seeing across not just this district, this district, but statewide. So I just wanted to update the rest of the board about one of the topics that was brought up in our special education committee, and I appreciate our, our team that presented back to our parents that were very understanding about understanding what was going on in the state and some of the challenges that, really that it's a, it's a labor shortage issue, not a lack of effort on the part of our school district. So I just wanted to give a little update from SEEK. I'll turn it over to Dr. Stanley for superintendent updates.
All right. We have some incredibly successful students, and we have not met since the girls took state tournament in soccer, so we have to give them a round of applause. Again, Dr. Smazel had talked about the fact that we have actually an experiment on the International Space Station. I turned to Director Green and I said, that was in our classroom, and now it's on the International Space Station, which is incredibly, I mean, it's just outstanding. And the fact that we have students from all three grade bands that have a final experiment in the new SSEP. The other thing I will say is that our boys' football team has made it to semifinals, and they are going to the bank, so we have to give them a round of applause for that. There's just so many things to be proud of, Edina public schools, and I just wanted to highlight a few of them. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Dr. Stanley. With that, do I have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor of adjourning the meeting, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? The meeting is adjourned. Thank you.
I know. I was like...